...is part of our assessment, for each one of the gang reduction zones, the seven or eight target areas that we're starting with, we're actually in the process right now of launching a resource mapping and a needs assessment to determine what already exists there, and that's both government-funded and government-run programs, as well as non-government-run programs, so that we can create the kind of maps that will then allow us to really micro-target the additional half a million to six hundred thousand dollars that we're going to put into those areas to ensure that we're leveraging what's already happening on the ground.
Speaking of which, we saw a few minutes ago in this program that there's different programs being used in different areas of the city, different council districts. Anything stand out with you so far as things that have been particularly effective?
Well, you know, I think there's lots of good programs out there, and I guess that's one thing that I would want to say is that, you know, I think there are a lot of folks who are in the trenches, who were doing the kinds of things I did for seventeen years, who are rooted in neighborhoods, who every day are putting their lives on the line for kids and families, and they're providing young people a place to go that's safe after school, and there's a lot of good that's going on. I think the challenge is there's not enough of that. We actually need more, and we need additional resources to do even more, so that we can ensure that every kid who wants to choose a positive and productive future actually has the kind of network that they can do that and become successful. So, I think there's lots of good stuff going on there, and sometimes we're a little too pessimistic about what the possibilities for the future are.
Well, to pick one to talk about for a second, it was mentioned by several council members, the CLEAR program, Community Law Enforcement and Recovery Program. Councilman Reyes, for example, talked about it. How does CLEAR help suppress gang activity?
Well, CLEAR is really a coordinated law enforcement approach. It's a partnership between the mayor's office, the LAPD, the sheriff's department, the city attorney, the district attorney, and probation and parole. And what it really does is get all the different parts of the law enforcement community to begin to work together in a targeted area and focus their attention and efforts on gangs. So, for example, on the prosecution side, you know, in a typical case, those cases might be passed within the district or to the attorney's office from the time somebody is filed on until they actually get prosecuted. It might go through three or four different attorneys' hands. Well, in the CLEAR program, actually, one attorney will follow that all the way through and do what's called vertical prosecution. But it also gets law enforcement talking to one another, probation officers are riding with LAPD officers in some of these communities, and so it's a very coordinated approach on the suppression side.
A minute ago, I think you mentioned, within the mayor's gang reduction strategy, six or seven, I believe it was, target communities. What are those communities, and what specifically will happen there?
Well, there's in the northeast Cypress Park area, we'll have a new gang reduction zone. In the Hollenbeck Ramona Gardens area, we already have a project in the Hollenbeck Boyle Heights area. We'll be adding a new site in the Newton area, one in the Seventy-seventh Division area, one in the southwest Baldwin Village, part of the city, and then out in the northeast valley in Pacoima Foothill. And in each one of those areas, we'll have a CLEAR, they'll have a CLEAR site, as we just talked about what that is on the law enforcement, and then I've actually, we'll be hiring, and we've hired most of them already, program managers for each one of those target areas, and we'll be doing these needs assessment, resource mapping exercises, and then over the course of the next number of months, we'll be issuing an RFP, to request for proposal, to get out five hundred to six hundred thousand additional dollars for prevention, intervention, and reentry, and then to begin to connect the docs through my program managers of all the various city resources, so we start to build a cohesive sense of effort around these targeted areas and see if we can get reductions.
Of course, there are a number of gang enforcement initiatives included in that very thick document that is the mayor's strategy. Can you explain what some of those other initiatives are for our viewers?
Well, on the suppression side, I'm actually not responsible for the suppression side. That's really done by LAPD, but, you know, this last year, they launched the South Bureau Criminal Gang Homicide Group, which was a number, one hundred and twenty of the department's most experienced gang detectives in the city, and they're really focusing on gang-related murders to try and get to the bottom of those cases and clear them, as they say, and it's working with lots of different jurisdictions, including federal efforts. They also appointed, designated an LAPD gang coordinator, who's Deputy Chief Gary Brennan, and then also on the suppression side, you know, they have the ten most wanted gang members and really targeted some of the high-profile gangs. So, there's been a number of things on the suppression side, but I'm really, and that was really done at the beginning of the year, and I'm really focusing more on the prevention, intervention, and reentry.
Okay, fair enough. The day after you appeared before City Council this past week, the mayor sent a note around to department heads in the city, saying that they had to all do their part to make up a seventy-five million dollar shortfall, including, it looks like, the city attorney's gang prosecution unit and perhaps some other gang programs. This obviously must be of some concern to you.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, obviously, we're in a tough time financially with the economy slowing down, and particularly the housing crisis that's going on around the nation, and given the fact that here in California, you know, government, local government in particular relies so much on, you know, property taxes and the transfer taxes and things like that. We're in a tough situation, and then there's the governor and the legislature struggles with what could be a ten to fourteen billion dollar deficit, as they're talking about there. You know, times are going to be tough. I think it's why it's going to be really important for us to look at the dollars the city is already spending, which we're in the process of doing, to determine how we could spend those in a more strategic and a smarter way, and we will probably make some recommendations in next year's budget about how to do that.
Before we let you go, we just have to ask you, what can Los Angelinos in general, the rest of us, do to help reduce gang and youth violence? Anything?
You know, I think it's getting involved, you know, I think one of the challenges is people sort of live between being anesthetized and sort of blurry-eyed and glazed over and not really paying attention to the problem, or they're paralyzed by it because of either fear and because of the violence they're experiencing in their own community. And I think we need to move as many citizens as we possibly can into a place in between those two feelings where people actually become engaged, and that could be becoming involved in a mentoring program, or becoming a volunteer in after-school program, in community beautification efforts in their own neighborhoods to send a message to, you know, criminal elements that we're watching, that we're not willing to let our neighborhood go into decline because of this kind of youth violence, and just to become involved and not just to sit back and throw up your hands and say, you know, there's really nothing that we can do as citizens here in L.A.
Well, Director of the Mayor's Office on Gang Reduction and Youth Development, Reverend Jeff Carr, welcome back to Los Angeles, and thanks for joining us. I'm Councilweekend Review.
Thank you for having me.
And of course, we wish Reverend Carr and all the city departments working to reduce gang violence much success. And if you'd like information on any of the gang reduction programs discussed, just dial 311, your one call to City Hall. And watch Councilweekend Review for highlights of the week's council meetings, and listen for item numbers associated with those discussions you have an interest in. Then go to the World Wide Web and listen to those discussions in their entirety using the new City of Los Angeles video-on-demand feature. Visit the city's website at lacity.org and follow the instructions on the screen. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending November 30th, 2007. On behalf of Dave Brown and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Councilweekend Review.
stops people from moving. We exist to make sure it doesn't. The National Multiple Sclerosis Society is a collective of passionate individuals united by a common goal to address the challenges of each person whose life is affected by MS. We believe that moving is not just something you can or can't do, but rather is who you are, that if you are alive, you move along with, because of, and in spite of, the great big turning world. Join the movement, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, at nationalmsociety.org.
It's time for the 12th Annual LADWP Holiday Life Festival in Griffith Park. From November 26th through December 30th, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., vehicles can enter at Los Feliz Boulevard. Walkers may park at the LA Zoo Parking Lot. Shuttle services available from the LA Zoo Parking Lot on weekends, and December 14th through the 30th. For more information, go to www.dwplifefestival.com or www.ladwp.com. Happy holidays from the LADWP.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council meeting of Wednesday, December 5th, 2007. This is the Los Angeles City Council, and we are meeting in John Ferraro Memorial Council Chambers, in Room 340 of City Hall. The Los Angeles City Council meets here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Our meetings are publicly noticed, and our agendas are available online at lacity.org. Seventy-two hours in advance, twenty-four hours for our special meeting agenda items, and we also have those agendas available here, live and in person, or at the City Clerk's office. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, and a very good morning to everybody. I'm joined here by my colleagues, Councilwoman Wendy Gruel, Councilman Jose Wezar, Councilmember Tom Labange, Councilmember Jan Perry, Councilmember Bill Rosendahl, and Councilmember Dennis Zein. That brings us to seven members. We are waiting a full two-thirds of our fifteen-member body, or ten members. Thus, when three more members arrive, we will be able to begin. It is past the hour, and pursuant to our own council rules, all council members should be here on time at 10:00 a.m. So, I'd like to ask the following council members who are late to please join us. Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Cardenas, Councilwoman Hahn, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. Councilmember Reyes is excused today on city business. We want to welcome our viewers as well on Channel 35, L.A. City View, where we're broadcast live through the city's cable system, and rebroadcast each evening that we meet. We're also available online via webcast at lacity.org, and you can cast our live-streaming video on the web there. We also have archived footage of all of our past council meetings at our city's homepage. Just click on the links, and you can pull up any of our past meetings to listen to any of the proceedings on any of the issues that are of importance to you. Finally, you can use your telephone by calling (213) 621-CITY. That's (213) 621-CITY, and you can listen to the proceedings of the City Council, and any of our committee meetings as well. Our agendas are split into items which have already received a public hearing in committee, and those for which public hearings have not yet been held. Every item receives a public hearing, either in committee or the full council. If anybody would like to speak on an item which has already had a public comment, you can fill out a speaker card, but I would let you know that it requires a reopening of public comment by a council member and a vote of the council. Items that have not yet received a public hearing automatically are triggered when you submit a card, so if you'd like to fill out a speaker card in the back and give it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, we'll be happy to hear your comments. And if you have items of a general nature, not on our agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the city, you finally can fill out a similar speaker card and fill out public comment on it, and during our public comment section, we forward all members of the public two minutes to address the council on an item of concern to them. Want to thank the council members who are here now on time, Councilmembers Cardenas, Gruel, Wezar, Labange, Perry, Rosendahl, Smith, and Zein. We're still waiting one more council member. Again, Councilmember Alarcon, Councilwoman Hahn, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Weiss. Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. With that, we have a quorum, and Madam Clerk, if you will please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Wezar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zein, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Alarcon moves, and Mr. Wezar seconds. There's no objection. Those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Smith moves with a second from Ms. Perry. Without objection, those two will be approved. We can run through the agenda, please.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items one through three, recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearing and consideration of the ordinance to December 19th.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing the public hearings and the ordinance to the 19th of December? If there's nobody wishing to call special, let's go ahead and open the roll on that action. Oh, we don't need to, okay. We will just go ahead and do that without objection. Next items, please.
Next items, item number four. That's also a public hearing item, and the applicant consents to a continuance to January 16th.
Okay. The applicant has consented to a continuance on item number four. If no council members wish to call that special, and there's no objection, we will continue item four till the 16th of January 2008. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have been held, items five through 25. On 25, there are two reports on the file. A motion is required.
Let's hold five through eight, as we'll wait twelve members for those. That gives us nine through 25. Colleagues, Ms. Perry?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four for Ms. Perry. Are there specials, colleagues? This is items nine through 25. Nine through 25. Anybody wishing to call those special? Nine through 25.
And there are two reports on number 25.
Okay. Let's go ahead and hold 12 on the table for now as well. And if there's no, yeah, sorry, Mr. Wezar?
Number 11 and 12, special, please, for Hahn.
Okay. We have 12 already special. We'll call 11 special for Ms. Hahn as well. Any other specials, colleagues? Ms. Perry?
We're not there yet.
Okay. If not, let's go ahead, then. On the motion for 25, I'm sorry, those don't conflict, those motions?
There are additional on the budget and finance, and I believe that one is the more current.
Okay, let's go ahead. I'll move that one. And let's add five through eight, now that we have 12 members, if it's not too difficult to do. And 23 for Ms. Gruel. And, sorry, for Ms. Gruel, we'll do 23 special for Ms. Gruel, and 25 for Ms. Gruel as well. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, just for clarification, the items called special are 11, 12, 23, 24.
And 25.
And 25.
Correct. So, if we can take the balance up now, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 26 through 39.
Okay. Colleagues, we have items 26 through 39. Ms. Perry?
Thirty.
Thirty for Ms. Perry.
Okay, this one has.
And we do have a public speaker card on item 34. We'll call that special for cards from the public. Do not have any public speaker cards on any of the other items. Do we have any cards from Van Nuys?
No, Mr. President, not yet.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open and close the public hearings for the rest of those items. Any other specials, colleagues? 26 through 39. 26 through 39 before us. If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on the balance of those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are the closed-session items, 40 through 43. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's call the, hold those on the desk, and we also have, sorry, those have had public hearings or not?
The closed sessions? No, they have not.
Okay, and we have a card on 40 as well, so we'll make sure we hear that card before we go into closed session. Next items, please, if we can recess the regular meeting and call roll for the special meeting.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Wezar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zein, Garcetti, thirteen members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. First item, please.
The first item, Mr. President, is a report to be submitted from Energy and Environment Committee, and I do not believe that has been distributed as yet. Do you wish to hold that on the desk and continue it to the regular meeting?
Yes, let's go ahead and call that special. Ms. Perry, we'll call that special on item number 44. Next item, please.
Do you wish to adjourn the regular meeting?
Let's continue that back into the regular agenda and take up the continuation agenda.
Next item, then, is item number 45 on the continuation agenda, and I believe there's a request to continue this matter to, for one week, oh, to Friday.
Until Friday?
Yes.
Okay. Till Tuesday, okay? That would take us to the 11th of December. Is there any objection? If not, let's go ahead and do that. Mr. Parks, do you have a request?
Can I get number 19 reconsidered? I'd just like to give an instruction.
I'm sorry, can you just use your microphone real quick?
Excuse me. Can I get 19 reconsidered? I'd like to give an instruction to the CLA on that item.
Okay. Number 19, let's open the roll on reconsideration of 19 for Mr. Parks. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote, and we will...
Thirteen eyes.
Call that special for Mr. Parks, okay? Any other items, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. President, that would take council back to the public comment.
Okay. We'll take a public comment. Again, we want to thank members of the public who have come here for general public comment, and we have two minutes and a clock to help you budget your time up there at the podium. We'd like to, we have about seven or eight cards, and we'd like to start with James Ota, who will be our first speaker. After that, we'll hear from Michael Hubman.
Good morning. Good morning, President Garcetti and members of the City Council. The Clean Air Act Plan the mayor of Los Angeles and Long Beach proposed for the ports is going to have more problems for the truckers to qualify for a new truck. The clean air is for all to breathe and to help eliminate health issues created by the diesel engines in the harbor. Many truckers are not being qualified for the various programs that are available. Example, if a trucker works in a closer distance to the harbor, the portion he has qualified is a smaller amount to apply to a loan. A trucker who travels to the inland empire, his amount is more, but still not eighty percent, that we were told, will be the port's portion. All these trucks go in and out of the harbor daily, and this is there we want to help clean. Let the older trucks that are being replaced, starting in October 2008, be replaced as older trucks used in the harbor be the only requirement. They will become scrap metal, and then make the minimum requirement be that they work on the harbor daily. That these truckers qualify for the purchase of new trucks. We want the diesel engines to be replaced with a more efficient engine, and the truckers are trying to comply. Yet, the finance companies are making the portion the truckers are to be paying is more, or they're not qualifying. The mayor, the council members, and the port commissioners need to change some of these requirements, so the truckers can help with the Clean Air Act plan and qualify for the purchase of... purchase of a newer truck. All the harbor truckers are willing to help, but make it so that we can qualify to replace the older truck and make these ports be not the nation's largest, but the world's largest container port with cleanest air around. Let us stay focused on the clean air for everyone. Let us work together as independent trucking companies and independent drivers, no to concession and no to union. Look what is going on with other unions who are on strike and what contracts will be renewed next year in L.A. Unions say that they will honor any union strike, meaning they will not cross those trigger lines. But in the ports, you have only two unions to work with, and not three unions. Let us keep it that way. Yes to Clean Air and no to concession.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments today. Before we go, the next speaker, I neglected to recognize Mr. Weiss, who wanted to make an introduction in council chambers, and after that, we will return to public comment and Mr. Hubman, but first I'd like to recognize Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'm very privileged today to be able to introduce to you a gentleman whom I'm sure all of you are going to get to know personally over the next four years. Please join me in welcoming the new consul general from the state of Israel, Yaki Dayan.
Thank you very much.
I don't have to tell any of you in this council chamber about the great history, the great friendship between the city of Los Angeles and the state of Israel. What pleases me more than anything else, though, is the fact that the relationship between Los Angeles and Israel gets stronger and stronger every year. Just earlier this year, Yaki, Councilmember Wezar, who I think you met, and Councilmember Reyes, who is not here yet, had their first visit to Israel. And every year, there's more and more that our city and your country can do together. One reason that we have such a successful relationship, colleagues, is because the state of Israel considers Los Angeles to be one of the most important postings in its diplomatic service. I'm not making that up. The position of consul general in Los Angeles, which carries an ambassadorial rank typically...
It's the sixth biggest mission of Israel in the world.
Is, Yaki says, is the sixth biggest mission of the state of Israel in the world. So when Israel sends someone to Los Angeles, they send someone who is considered to be one of their most important rising stars. And I only go back as far as Yoram Ben-Zev, who is now Israel's ambassador to Germany. After him was a gentleman named Yuval Rotem, who many of you probably met, who is now Israel's ambassador to Australia. And Ehud Danoch, who just went back to Israel, will be someone who we will all be reading about very, very soon. He'll be making big news, I'm sure, in the state of Israel, in business and in politics. Yaki Dayan has a very distinguished resume as a career member of the diplomatic corps. He served as chief of staff to Zippy Libney, who's the foreign minister. He had a senior post in the Israeli embassy in Washington, D.C. And perhaps most significantly for world events today, he really was, he will put it this way, but from the people that I've spoken with in the foreign ministry in Jerusalem, he's really been the architect of Israel's strategy towards Syria. For the past year or two, before you were here, your assignment was Israel's engagement, if there is to be an engagement with Syria, he was the person behind the scenes drafting the documents, conducting the meetings. And now he's been sent here with his family, his wife, Galit, their three children. He will be a resident of the city of Los Angeles for the next four years. You are all going to get to know him, you're all going to get to know what a wonderful person he is, what a wonderful representative of his country he is, and I'm sure he wants to get to know each and every one of you, learn about your districts, and find new and innovative ways for the state of Israel to partner with each and every one of you. So, Yaki, we are really pleased to have you in Los Angeles. Welcome to Los Angeles, Yaki Dayan.
Thank you. I think we're going to speak unless everybody speaks before.
Mr. Zein, for a couple brief statements before we return to public comment.
Consul General, I want to give you welcome. I was upstairs with the Councilmember Weiss and Wendy Gruel and our city attorney to greet you with some of the members of the community. I want to welcome you to the wonderful city of Los Angeles. We've always had a great relationship with the consul general of Israel. We have many Jewish people in this community. Yesterday, we let the menorah with the mayor. It's a beautiful time of celebration. You're coming to Los Angeles at a wonderful time, so welcome you and your family, and please come visit us in the San Fernando Valley. We have many temples, many Jewish people who will welcome you with open arms, and we've got great bagel shops out in the San Fernando Valley, and you will enjoy, you'll enjoy.
I need to eat.
You need to eat. We will, we will make you enjoy the festivities and all the excitement that we have to offer in this wonderful city. So, on behalf of the folks that I represent, welcome you and all the temples. I'm sure we'll have many celebrations welcoming you to the city of Los Angeles. And Jack, thank you for bringing our new consul general forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Further brief comments, Mr. Wezar and Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you very much, and welcome to Los Angeles. As Mr. Weiss said, my colleague Reyes and I took a trip over to Israel last, in the last few months. It was a phenomenal trip. Eye-opening in many respects, politically, personally, and I'm glad we do those type of trips so that we continue to bond the relationship that we already have and improve upon it. And I ask you to visit Bull Heights sometime. We don't have as many bagel shops, but at one time, it had the most bagel shops probably anywhere in the United States at one time, highest concentration of Jews west of the Mississippi, and I probably represent that area now. We're working to protect and preserve some of the old synagogues that were there, so I welcome you to get a bit more familiar with Bull Heights if you haven't already, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal?
So just a short, short shout-out to you. Welcome to Los Angeles. When I did my television shows, we used to do a lot of shows on the Mideast, because we have the third-largest Jewish community in the world here in Los Angeles, and the partnership with Israel is extraordinary. A couple of my constituents the other day decided to move back to Israel. They're bringing their 97-year-old mother there, and she intends to pass on out of Jerusalem itself, where they have a family sanctuary there. But the connection, the family, the brothers and the sisters, the aunts and the uncles, we are very close to Israel. It is our kinship, and we bring you to our side of the family over here in West L.A., where I represent. Welcome to Los Angeles, and shalom. Thank you.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, Consul General. Welcome, Los Angeles, third in the world, next to New York and Hong Kong for consulates. And so it's so special to have you join over 100 other members of the diplomatic community, which is so important. And I also want to recognize Marvin Markowitz, our great chair of ELAT, sister city, and I helped strengthen our relationship there as well. Welcome to Los Angeles.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to also welcome you in behalf of the Eighth District and really thank the Jewish community for their long-term history of support of the African-American community in civil rights. Most recently, I attended an event where primarily the Jewish community was moving forward on a issue dealing with Dafar, and these are the kinds of things that we found a way in which joint efforts have made an impact on human rights, civil rights, and I look forward to having that continued relationship, and just welcome to Los Angeles.
Ms. Gruel, just popped up.
I will be brief, but I just, it was a pleasure to meet you last, this morning upstairs and to see all of the community advocates and people of the Jewish community there this morning to welcome you to Los Angeles. As we mentioned, this relationship between the consul general's office and Los Angeles is unique, and one in which we enjoy a very close relationship, so look forward to working with you. All that you do interacts with us and our constituents in the city of Los Angeles. We're happy to have you and your entire family. I know you'll enjoy your time here, as all of them have, because it's an exciting place to be and the relationship to continue to, I think, grow and prosper and work with the state of Israel. So, welcome to Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Looks like the speaker queue is clear, so with that, I'd love to hear from the council chairman.
Thank you. I'm really overwhelmed, such a warm welcome. I told the mayor that I just spoke yesterday to the foreign minister in Israel, the deputy prime minister, and I told her that I'm going to see the mayor of the second-largest Jewish city in the world, and she said, "I didn't know that you are here." I said, "No, I'm in Los Angeles." So I'm here, I'm really privileged, and this is what I told my consulate, to work in such a place, in a country that is the strategic partner of the state of Israel, having such a wonderful, supportive community with amazing friends like you, and I'm really looking forward to cooperate with you in many, many fields. And if somebody has to sacrifice and to be sent to Los Angeles and it's me, let it be. But I'm really looking forward in so many issues. I appreciate very much your leadership on the Iranian issue, the divestment on Iran. I think that it's a hot issue now, and I will not get into details, but I really believe that your leadership in this issue, the fact that you show the world that money should not go to sponsor terrorism in any way, that's a very powerful message coming with, from such a big and important city like yourself. We are looking forward to cooperate in many of the issues, the similarities are striking, the diversity in Israel. You have people coming from more than 120 countries, speaking so many languages, and it's so similar to this, to this wonderful and vibrant place and economy. And I think that we really can work a lot together, doing a lot with the Latino community, doing a lot with the African-American community, and with all those communities, working on education and other issues, because we are privileged to have next year as a special, as a very special year to the state of Israel. Israel celebrates its 60, it's a 60th anniversary of the state of Israel, to the, actually, Israel was reborn. And we would like to show the wonderful things that Israel achieved on the cultural issues as well on the technological issues, and we, the state of Israel, is looking forward to cooperate with you on clean tech issues, technological issues. We have leading technologies on water issues and solar energy, and I saw that this is one of the goals of this city to 2008. We have already two huge Israeli companies working in California, and really, the state of Israel is at your disposal. Whatever you need in those fields, Israel is willing to provide its technology. I think that it was Prime Minister Sharon once said in an interview that he gave to the Newsweek, that the world tends to see only one hand of Israel, and it's the hand of the conflict, but they tend to ignore the other hand of Israel and its contribution, not to itself and not to the Jewish people, but to the entire world. And this is exactly what we would like to bring and present here to the city of Los Angeles, and to deepen and to enhance the cooperation between us on those issues. So I'm really looking forward to work with the honorable city members as much as I can, and I promise to come and visit you and eat as many bagels as I can. That's a promise. And I acknowledge here a great friend of Israel as well, Marvin Markovich, who is a great friend, and I really thank Jack for the wonderful presentation. I should have brought my mother here if I knew. Thank you, thank you very much for the warm welcome, and I hope we'll fulfill the promises that we are making. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Consul General. And thank you very much, Mr. Weiss, for the presentation as well. We will now go back to general public comment, and Michael Hubman is our next speaker. Thank you, Mr. Hubman, for your patience, we appreciate it. Michael Hunt will be the next speaker after that, and after Mr. Hunt will be Candido Maris. Good morning.
Mr. President, city council, my name is Michael Hubman. I'm with the Independent Charities Union. At noon on Friday, December 7, 2007, and each Friday thereafter, the staff at Gladys Park, the corner of Sixth and Gladys, will turn out and remove all of the mostly homeless people who are using the park. The park will remain unused for two hours, and then will be used to hold an exclusive enclosed program. The denial of the use of the park is said to be for the exclusive use of a children's program. No one is saying that the children do not deserve all the programs and services that we can provide for them. However, the park should be available to everyone. It is wrong to take away the resource from such an underserved and needy population in a sense these people are as vulnerable and as risk as children. This is a good program with a very bad choice of venue. Gladys Park is currently serving as a rare place of refuge for so many down-on-out and vulnerable people. Gladys Park is located in an area of gross under-service with a huge population of homeless people. Gladys Park offers these people a chance to spend some time off the sidewalks of Eastern Skid Row, we call it the Bottoms. Gladys Park has a very high utilization rate. A dumb idea or an attack on the most vulnerable, take your pick, the damage done is the same. The people who use Gladys Park are of the lowest strata of humanity in our city. Many have nothing to do with the large missions west of San Pedro Street. They just want to spend some time off the sidewalk, away from the traffic and the constant police harassment. The city owns Gladys Park, it is not a private holding. The exclusion of adults from this facility may be contrary to law. The children that will attend the Friday program will be walked en masse to the park for the event since it will be closed, the event, it will be a closed event, why not hold it at a nearby school or some other more appropriate facility? Gladys Park has the, only has porta-potties for toilet facilities with no means to wash up after visiting the toilet.
Thank you, Mr. Hubman.
Why displace homeless people who have nothing out of their sanctuary?
Appreciate your comments.
This is an injustice, I ask you to look into it.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hunt is our next speaker, after that will be Candido Maris. Good morning.
Good morning. I want to thank all you guys for giving me the press release about the racial slurs. I think you guys got it right. I want to thank Bernard Parks, Jan Perry, and whoever brought this motion about. Any press I get is good press. It's not about a word, it's about discrimination, it's about people violating my civil rights as an individual, it's about people violating the city or the city violating the people's rights. I really want you guys to understand, I too would like to hang up this T-shirt and be out of here and back to work as soon as possible. I don't know if you guys understand, this is a Bill Rosenthal issue. It's about time that we head this thing to an end. We've been down here for two years. Mr. Stein, we will grant you an interview anytime Zuma Dog, Matt Dowd, and Michael Hunt, the Venice Outlaws. The reason why we came down here is because our civil rights were violated. Really, really, if we was to make a moratorium, it would be on civil rights and the stoppage of violating people's civil rights. On that note, I'd like to say this, the $800,000 that's going to the city attorney and the police need to go to, directly to the housing authority. I'm going to go over to the Western District Courthouse and give them a piece of my mind as well for dragging their feet as well. This thing needs to be over, it needs to be done, it really do, people's rights need to be restored in a fashionable way. City attorney, you can look there with your little pudge face, you know, it doesn't make me a difference, you can't arrest me no more than 24 times.
If you'll please not direct a hit into Mark.
Well, I said the city attorney, you know.
No, it doesn't matter, there's also a list about impertinent.
Okay, well, however you do it, Mr. Garcetti.
We appreciate your comments, Mr. Hunt. I will exercise my speech rights, you are welcome to wear that shirt, but I would underscore that you said you wish you could take it off, you could, and you could very easily, and, sir, it's not my time, and you could probably be listened to a little bit more, and so I would ask you again not to do that, but it is certainly your right. Our next speaker is Candido Maris. Mr. Maris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to speak on item 44, the nomination of Mr. Nahai.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was misclassified, my apologies. Chuck Tenen is our next speaker.
Good morning, councilmembers. Chuck Tenen, I bring your attention to an article in the Daily News, "Developers' $20,000 Lesson You Can't Fight City Hall." Our appeal was over a week ago. It was heard by the city council, and it was resolved, but now, a week later, the truth was tainted with cheap journalism by Rick Orlov of the Daily News. The article is an embarrassment to the Daily News and its readers. What a disgrace, shame on you, Rick Orlov. The press is supposed to respond to the truth, not erroneous crap. Get the facts straight, it was a breach of ethics in your responsibility as a reporter. Tell the truth what really happened, talk to the people that were involved. You gave us absolutely no opportunity whatsoever to respond to the truth. You talked about the developer playing by the rules and the city council bullying the developer into giving up an additional $20,000. And why did you crucify Bill Rosenthal? Your article implies the tenants are taking the rap and the developer is the victim. Why? Why? Facts, not one-sided piece of outrageous journalism. The developer is not the victim. We ask that you retract the article. You rub salt on a serious issue. Did the developer follow the rules when he offered me, the appellant, more money if I didn't appeal the planning commission's decision, but he didn't offer that to other tenant? Is that following the rules? Did he identify the outraged council member? What about the traffic problem on Magnolia? What about the motion for a cumulative study? What about the tape that was a controversial breach of ethics in the planning department's responsibility? Shame on you, Rick Love. Rick Orlov, you owe Bill Rosendahl an apology. You owe us an apology and tell the truth. Shuffle volunteer to 5% discount off his condos to be built to teachers, firemen, and police. Was he coerced into doing this? Was he forced into detail construction mitigation measures and protections?
Thank you, Mr. Tenen.
Rick Orlov lacked character, judgment, and discretion.
Our next speaker is Noel Weiss.
Council members, I'm here basically to defend my councilman, Bill Rosendahl, as a result of what I consider to be just an outrageous, pernicious, pandering puff piece by Rick Orlov in the Daily News. I don't think, I think any resemblance between the truth and Mr. Orlov's article is just a mere coincidence. The definition of power is not in its exercise, the real definition, it's not in its exercise, but it's in its restraint. Now, when Herb Wesson pulled a Janice Hahn basically and got additional $5 million for tenants displaced, I didn't see Rick Orlov, I didn't see the Daily News talking about that positive story in any way, shape, or form. But now, all of a sudden, we got a city, we got to bring the city together. And what do you have? You have the press coming in under the auspices of some unidentified council member who should come out, by the way, from under Rick Orlov's shadow, basically trying to divide the city between tenants and developers. That's wrong. This story was a positive story, and instead we get basically this negative spin. More importantly, this idea about playing by the rules, this moniker basically has to stop. There's nuance. Nobody criticized the developer for basically volunteering 3% to 5% reductions for teachers, firemen, and policemen. He wasn't shaken down for that. He wasn't shaken down for the fact that we negotiated over 60, 70 hours of hard work, none of which was reflected either in Ms. Gruehl's comments or in the article. The fact that we got detailed construction mitigation conditions that are exquisite and protective of the community, both with regard to the Ben project and the other project, that didn't show up. The only thing that showed up was the tenants and Mr. Rosendahl. And again, Mr. Rosendahl, I owe you an apology publicly. I apologize to you privately, but the fact is, I didn't recognize that you seconded Janice's motion, and you did it, and it was a courageous thing, and as far as I'm concerned, you got a heart as big as gold. And the fact of the matter is, the fact that you did what you did, knowing the type of person you are, demonstrates your courage and your commitment to what you believe in, and you shouldn't back down from that for one instant. Thank you.
Our next speaker, I believe, is Arnold Sachs. Was this your card? You put one in for public comment? Okay. We didn't have a name on it, but I think I recognize the handwriting.
And if I could remind the public comment speakers to direct your comments to the council as a whole, please.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for that clarification. This will be our last public speaker card. After that, we will go to the items called special, beginning with item number 11.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Would that be the handwriting on the wall, sir?
There was handwriting on the card.
Just curious, I have a few things I'd like to talk about. Based on the recent ruling by the California Supreme Court, when will or where will the public salaries, the salaries for the public workers or the city workers be listed so that it becomes available for public viewing? I'm concerned, basically, because in a newspaper article, it happened to mention that the Santa Clara Valley Transportation GM is making $344,000 a year. Also, yesterday in the LA Times, there was this little article about a transportation committee meeting on Monday, but it was never posted what happened. Also, the previous speakers were concerned about some ethical conduct by the Department of Planning, the Planning Department. They should also know that the Planning Department had retired last week after 32 years. And speaking of ethics, I'd just like to point out that last week, on the 20th of November, you made an appointment of Mr. Michael Camenez to the City Ethics Commission. And in the introduction, it was mentioned that you have a strong city ethics code for the city of LA, one of the strongest. But I'd like to point out, it's just which side of the line you happen to look at. This is a story from the LA Times, "Logging Proponent's Credentials Question." A gentleman, UCF, Thomas M. Bonixson, is calling himself a visiting professor at the UC Davis. And people wrote that he's getting money, he's a professor with knowledge of logging. And people wrote that he's getting money from the logging industry. And he claims to say, "It's not the source of the money that's important, it's the integrity and the scientific ability of the person." He claims he's a professor of the UC Davis, but he never got an appointment there. So how credible is his knowledge? How credible are ethics if you don't enforce them?
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. That will end our general public comment for today. Actually, I misspoke. Item 11 won't be taken first if there's no objection. I believe we have a request to take item 44 out of order. And if you can just hold that on the table for a second. Yeah, Ms. Hahn.
Could we reconsider eight and 22, please?
Eight and 22, okay. If there's no objection, let's go ahead and open the roll.
Thank you.
On reconsideration of eight and 22. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And we'll call those special for Ms. Hahn. And Ms. Perry, if you'd like, we could start with item 44, the confirmation of the general manager.
Okay.
At this time, we'll take that up first without an objection. And I'd like to recognize Ms. Perry and ask our nominee to come forward to the table. Mr. Nahai? Mr. Nahai?
Is she here? Yeah.
If you'd like to come forward to the table.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As Chair of the Energy and Environment, yesterday we had a full complement of our members there. The meeting ran very, very long, so by the time we were able to discuss Mr. Nahai, we had lost a number of members. So the item passed out of committee without recommendation. But we had extensive conversation, and I'd like to just begin the conversation by giving Mr. Nahai a few direct questions and letting him, let him present his credentials to us. And if you would, Mr. Nahai, just give us a summation of your academic, practical, private sector, public sector, engineering experience that you've had already running a complex, multifaceted organization such as the Department of Water and Power.
Please do so. Thank you very much.
Before you begin, if I may, I think we'll actually do public comment because it was a communication from the committee. We're going to have public comment first, and then we'll get tears. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Smith for a quick introduction just before that public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity because I do have to leave shortly. We do have 14 guests here, and I don't want to hold up this, and the guy, you're going to be sitting there for a while, I know. So if you'll indulge, we have a special guest here. If I had have our 14 visitors from China, please stand. We have representatives from China here today. Welcome. These are professors who are in exchange program at California State University, Northridge. They have a great program at the China Institute at CSUN, who is headed by our good friend Justine Xin Su. She's here with the delegation. Welcome again. They are professors from China. They work in exchange program to build relationships with the American population and understanding of China in the China Institute. They work in municipal government, many of them work in the planning department in Shanghai and Guangzhou. So welcome. I have been to the planning department in Shanghai. It is the most magnificent building I have ever seen for planning in the world. And if you ever get a chance to go to Shanghai, please go visit them at the Shanghai, at the planning department. Once again, they are doing a great job out there. It's a program for 25 years, bringing studies over, exchanging professors. We're very proud to have you with us today, and welcome to Los Angeles. Xiexie.
Ni hao man. Xiexie, Mr. Smith. With that, yes, I knew that would trigger Mr.
Can I just, because it's a small world, Mr. Smith, can I ask my, wait a second, wait a second. Xiexie. I want to introduce my representative from Guangzhou, Robin here, who's here on an internship from UCLA. So Guangzhou, meet Guangzhou. Small world, we meet in LA.
Shanghai, absolutely. Thank you very much. With that, we will return to the public comment on item 44. Again, we appreciate the public's patience this morning. Candido Maris will be our first speaker, and Tom Ford will follow, then Jonathan Parfry and Joyce Sisson. Good morning, Mr. Maris.
Good morning, Mr. President. Happy Hanukkah, good yentuf. I would like to thank Mayor Viragosa for a promise he made two years ago. He promised that we would have accountability and transparency at the department. Mr. Nahai, you will bring that to the department. Yesterday at the DWP meeting, I said to you that if you walk with integrity, you will not stumble. I believe that that's what you will do. When you spoke about working with the workers of DWP, the good workers, the honest workers who believe in doing what's best for the ratepayers, that you'll do that, that you'll go out into the community, that you'll meet with people, that you'll hold people accountable, that is very important. So I want to thank you for that. And, Mr. President, council members, the Department of Water and Power has a bright future because we're going to have accountability. And the ratepayers, the ratepayers, the future is good for them because we're going to have transparency. So again, I want to thank the council and Mayor Viragosa for this wonderful appointment.
Thank you very much. Tom Ford will be our next speaker. Tom Ford? Is Mr. Ford here? Not Jonathan? Parfry would like to come forward next.
Mr. President, council members, my name is Jonathan Parfry. I am the Director of Green LA, which is the region's environmental coalition. We are composed of over 60 environmental and environmental justice groups here in Southern California. And also, by way of introduction, I am also the acting president of the Los Angeles League of Conservation Voters. I am here to convey our strong support for the nominee, David Nahai. I would like to quote from the letter that you have received. And in this, we say, during his tenure as President of the Board of Commissioners of LADWP, Mr. Nahai drove major initiatives to improve workforce issues, including improving the airing and treatment of employee grievances and discrimination claims, increasing job training and recruiting programs, improving and expanding the hiring practices of the utility, and negotiating energy initiatives that protect jobs, all the while still increasing the amount of clean energy and conservation measures supplied to ratepayers. We believe Mr. Nahai would be an exceptional public servant and provide exceptional service to the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan. Joyce Sisson will be our next speaker. After that will be Saladat Garcia. Good morning.
Good morning. I work with Heal the Bay, and we just wanted to let you know that we strongly support the appointment of David Nahai as the General Manager of the Department of Water and Power. And he has proven exemplary in his environmental leadership on issues of climate change and water quality. And this appointment demonstrates the bold and critical leadership of Mayor Viragosa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Should Mr. Nahai be confirmed? The Oversight Committee looks forward to working with him in a very positive way. And Mr. Nahai does live within the Los Angeles perimeters. That's a sign. We also, as, on behalf of the Oversight Committee, I would like to urge Mr. Nahai to reconsider the 3% increase. Should it continue, it would be a close to a billion dollars rate shock for the ratepayers. This would include a 30% increase in power rates to single-family homes. We urge Mr. Nahai to drop the multi-year increases, given the many unanswered questions that we have on the five-year audit. We urge the incorporation of the Oversight Committee as part of the internal Oversight Committee plans that DWP will have. And we advocate and urge that there be respect for the MOU. And we, as an Oversight Committee, we certainly appreciate the work that has been happening with him. We request that the liaison be implemented as soon as possible so that we can work together in a, through conservation perhaps with it, and also through the education and educating the neighborhoods and the community as to what DWP has to offer and its programs and the many significant projects that are to come about. I thank you very much for the time that you have given me, and we do look, we do look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Is Tom Ford here? One last call for Tom Ford. If not, that will close our general public comment on this. And would you want to turn it over to Ms. Nahai, or do you want to continue, Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I, again, I'll reiterate the question, to ask Mr. Nahai to review for the council his academic, practical, private sector, public sector, engineering experience, the experience that he's had in running a complex, multifaceted organization comparable to the Department of Water and Power. Hold my time? Or restart my time, I guess.
Okay. Mr. Nahai?
Thank you very much. I'll be pleased to respond. And, Councilmember, let me thank you for meeting with me personally and for the time you accorded me yesterday. I very much look forward to working with you, should I be confirmed, in your capacity as Chair of the Energy and Environment Committee. Starting with my academic qualifications, I hold graduate and postgraduate degrees from the London School of Economics and from UC Berkeley in law. This is not, thank you. In terms of public sector experience first, and then I'll talk about private sector. In the public sector, I've served on the DWP Commission for two years. The first year as Vice President, the second year as President of the Commission. I think Mr. Parfry and his generous support alluded to the fact that I have been a rather exceptional Commissioner. I'm proud to say that I've played a leadership role in many of the rather remarkable changes that have occurred at the department over the last two years. Internal personnel issues as well as external issues such as the tripling of the renewable portfolio standard, the move towards recycling, and numerous other accomplishments that I think the department has made. Additionally, with respect to public sector experience, I've served for 10 years on the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board. In those 10 years, I've served in the administrations of three different governors, Governor Pete Wilson, Governor Gray Davis, and Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger. I've been privileged to serve as Chair of the Board four times, which I believe is unprecedented. And during my tenure, I'm also very pleased to say that the Board has made enormous strides and is today a water quality leader, not only in California, but perhaps nationally as well. Additionally, on the public sector side, I serve as Vice President of the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission. This is a creature of statute. I was asked to serve as a leader, to serve as an architect really, of setting up its structure, which I'm very pleased to have done today. It's a vibrant and very well-functioning organization. Councilmember Weiss currently serves as its Chair, and I serve as a Vice Chair of that. Moving now to my private sector experience. For the past 15 years, I've owned and run my own boutique, a law firm, with a full staff of attorneys and personnel. It's been, for me, the American dream, a very lucrative business. I've met payroll every two weeks. People who haven't done that definitely should try it. It will teach you how to manage a business. And so I have that very, I think, invaluable, hands-on, detailed experience of how exactly to meet the bottom line every couple of weeks. Prior to doing that, I was a partner in a Wall Street law firm, a very large organization with hundreds of partners and thousands of staff members working in the real estate transactional area. Additionally, with respect to private sector experience, I've served now for a decade on the board of a bank, on its executive committee. During that time, I've come to understand very well how the financial markets work. This too is, I think, an indispensable piece of experience for anybody who aspires to be the General Manager of the Department of Water and Power. And we've had this conversation about the rate increases and why it is and how it is that they impact the bond rating of the entity and debt service coverage ratios and what have you. Those are all lessons that I've learned by virtue of my private Those are all lessons that I've learned by virtue of my private sector experience, serving on the executive committee of a bank. In addition to that, as you've heard, I am an environmentalist. I'm very proud of my environmental credentials. I was awarded the Environmental Champion Award in 2003, and I serve as vice president of the California League of Conservation Voters. This, too, I would offer, is an essential qualification for whoever purports to be the GM of the department at this time, because so many of the initiatives of the Department of Water and Power today are, in essence, environmental, whether it's dealing with the water shortage, diversifying water resources, recycling, aquifer remediation, stormwater recapture, these are all environmental initiatives. Certainly, on the power side, reducing our greenhouse gas emissions profile, diversifying our resources, conservation measures, both water and the power. These are matters that have been talked about and have been weighed in the environmental community now for a long time. And it takes, I think, somebody both with the connections in the environmental community and with knowledge of these issues to step up to the helm of DWP now. So those are just some of the highlights of my career, private sector, public sector. By the way, also in the community, let me just offer this as well, I've been a community activist. I think all my life, I've been honored to have been recognized three times now for my humanitarian work. I have a great deal of sensitivity for protecting those who are unable to fend for themselves, perhaps as well as the rest of us can. And that, too, is a sensitivity and an ethos that I think should be brought to the Department of Water and Power, because as we go forward with all of our various programs, we need to be very careful to remember that not everybody is able to afford financially to deal with rate increases and so on. And I think that is also a sensitivity that I bring to the table as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nahai. My next question is about the proposal that's on the table, now to restructure power rates by applying tiers. And I wanted to get your take on that, because as it's currently configured, rates would be based on proposed zones, based on drier temperatures, valley and metro areas. And what's your thought on that?
Certainly. Councilmember, forgive me if I don't look at you as I respond to the question. I've been told that I have to talk directly into the microphone. Our rates, our power rates at the DWP--
If you'd like to, you both just move the microphone a little bit over that way. We just want to make sure we can hear you well, so.
Okay. Okay. Is that better? Can everybody hear me now? Okay. Our power rate structure at the DWP is antiquated. It's obsolete, really. No other utility, I don't want to say no other utility, but most other utilities have long passed, gone to tiered rates. What tiered rates are, is that they're a way of promoting the conservation of energy. And the way they work is that, for us, we would provide very low-cost energy up to a certain amount of usage. Beyond that usage, the very basic unit cost of that energy would increase. For currently, the proposal, and I've always said that this is a work in progress, currently the proposal is that if, in the metro area south of Mulholland, usage up to three hundred and fifty kilowatt-hours per month would be at the lower rate. Once usage starts to exceed that amount, there would be a higher tier that would kick in. North of Mulholland, where there's clearly a temperature difference, that first tier under the current proposal is five hundred kilowatt-hours per month. Now, you know, I think those proposals on the part of the department were based on maps developed by the California Public Utilities Commission. And I know that there are other suggestions that have been made, that perhaps there are other zones within the city that might qualify for higher temperature treatment. And I think we need to continue to look at that. But at some point, whether it's today or tomorrow, we have to change the entire power rate structure and go to a tiered structure if we're going to meaningfully encourage conservation and correspondingly reward more frugal usage of electricity.
Next question, and this will be my last one, and we can go on to someone else, is, given that we've had two heat storms, two years in a row, and the significant problems our power system had, tell us what your plans are, not only to respond to the infrastructure issue, but the staffing issue, and with respect to staffing, the actual training of the staff in a timely manner in anticipation that we may have another one.
Yes, I think we do need to anticipate that we will have another heat wave. And this is why the department has introduced the Power Reliability Program in order to address the infrastructure issues, in order to renovate the system, to upgrade the system, and to, and it's across the board. It's not just transformers, it's circuits, it's poles, it's undergrounding, it's trying to take care of the entire infrastructure system. And if we don't do that, we're going to continue to have deterioration in the system, and we're going to face larger problems in the future. The staffing issue is really part and parcel of the infrastructure issue. The two cannot be separated, because you have to have adequate staff to go out there and maintain the poles and to respond in a crisis situation. This is why we've brought forward a request for modest rate increases, in order to be able to get sufficient money to deal with the infrastructure upgrades and to secure the additional staffing. Now, with respect to staffing, there appear to be almost inherent barriers to adding staff. And when we first got on the commission, we formed the ad hoc committee, an ad hoc retirements committee, in order to deal with the looming retirement problem that we have. But in dealing with that committee, it also came to light that we have an almost systemic hiring problem at the department as well. And I think over the last two years, we've broken through a number of the barriers. That committee has really been a catalyst for getting management and labor together to talk about these kinds of problems. One of the commissioners in our meeting yesterday said that he thought that he saw some light at the end of the tunnel. I do, too, but I think I want to really get in there and unravel the mystery of why it is that hiring appears to be slower than certainly I would like to see it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. President, I'll relinquish the rest of my time. If I need to speak again, I'll press my button.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And our next speaker is Mr. Zine. We have a number of different council members. Mr. Zine, Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Gruehl, Mr. Weiss, Ms. Hahn, and then Mr. Labange. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, David.
Good morning.
We first met on an airplane.
Yes, indeed.
We were headed to Asia with the mayor. That's when I first met you, and you met me, and had conversation, and did that tour, the business trip, some issues that are of concern to the other city family members, the pay difference for same positions. A person who's working for a city department, a category, and a person working for the Department of Water and Power, the same category, there's a big pay spread, big difference in that. That's created a lot of problems with the workforce. That needs to be addressed. We're trying to address it on our end, and I hope that in your position, and I do support you for that position, gentlemen, I think you've got the qualifications. I told one of your representatives where she is. She's nervous. But I told her I wasn't, there she is, she was shuddering. I told her I wasn't going to support you. She was very nervous about that. I was just kidding you. But we need to come to some resolve with that. Also, the pension system, there's a big difference between the pension system for Water and Power employees and other city employees. And that creates a lot of unhappiness and a lot of morale problems. That issue, we need to come to some kind of solution. The issue on the rates, representing the San Fernando Valley, as you know, it's hotter out there, the larger yards, the more water, warmer weather, more air conditioning use. Somehow, that balance has to take place, because we know that secession was born in the valley. We need to somehow satisfy the needs of the valley at a rate that they can afford. And that's a continuing problem. If you live on the west side, near the ocean, you don't have the air conditioning needs you do in the San Fernando Valley, where it reaches a hundred and God knows what degrees. So I bring that to your attention. The neighborhood councils, critical that we maintain that communication between your department, Department of Water and Power, and neighborhood councils. When it comes to the infrastructure, we know that there's a lot of infrastructure needs, a lot of concerns that have to be met. We know that some of the water pipes break. It's old system, it's been around for many, many years. We need to replace a lot of that. At the same time, we need to convince people that it's necessary. And it seems that when people turn around, we're asking for money, more money, and more money, and they're saying, what are you doing with it?
Yes.
So the sensitivity, so that's another issue that we really address in the San Fernando The system condition, and I've seen it where many times it's broken down, those intense heat that we receive here in the city of Los Angeles, and what happens when the system, and certain communities seem to have those blackouts, more often than other communities. Whether we can have a portable system kick in or something so those folks don't go days by days by days without it. I know there's portable generators and things that oftentimes, when it hits certain communities, it'll go for days. If it's in an area that's not as hot as other areas, not as bad. So I know natural incidents take place, but the system that oftentimes we take for granted, you turn on the faucet, the water's there, we take it for granted. You turn on the switch, the lights come on, we take it for granted. When it's not there, then obviously, people are very concerned and very upset. So those are the real issues that I look at, to say, you as a general manager with the department personnel, to make sure we meet those demands and meet those needs. And if you can respond to just your glimpse of some of the infrastructure demands and needs, and how we make the people in the valley, who represent half the city, make them happy to know they're receiving some benefits and consideration for what they have to pay.
Thank you. And then we'll hear from Mr. Cardenas after the answers to those questions. Thank you. He's going to respond, though.
Yes. All right. Let me, you made a lot of points, and I've mentally noted all of them, but let me try to respond to some of them. With respect to the water rates, as you know, currently, there are differentials in rates that take into account what I will describe as the special situation that valley residents face by virtue of the fact that they are in a hotter temperature zone. This is why we structure, the rate we structure, in order to provide a larger, a tier of five hundred kilowatts per hour, the first tier for valley residents. The department is very well aware that the valley is simply hotter. So that is not a matter that is at all lost on me, and I supported and voted for the rate restructure.
Thank you.
I think the other point that you made was with respect to the memorandum of understanding. You know, the MOU, as it presently stands, is something that we live with. It is a legal commitment of the department. It is not something that we can dishonor. It is an MOU that this august body, not everybody on this council, but the council generally, approved as well. We are going to be coming up for a new round of negotiations, quickly now, I think, in And with your indulgence, though, I would rather not talk about what the department's strategy might be at that time, how I see those negotiations going. But the discrepancies that you talk about is something that I think we recognize with respect to a certain level of people working at the department. And we've got to be a little bit careful here. I was just, this Saturday, I was at the twenty-fifth anniversary of burn survivors, put on by the Grossman Burn Center, and Councilmember Gruehl was there as well. And so many of the burn survivors that went up to the microphone and spoke and praised the doctor that had treated them, many of them are DWP workers. And if there is a fate worse than electrocution, I don't know what it is. But these people run that risk and make that sacrifice all the time. So as we go through and we see which DWP worker is worth how much amount of money, I think there are going to be those kinds of issues. And I'm sure you, as a first responder yourself, are very attuned to those kinds of things. So we need to think about those things as well, but I'm very sensitive to it, and I take your points.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one response. The people in the vaults, the people in the linemen, I agree. The other categories is what I'm concerned about. So I trust you'll take care of it.
Yes, I completely understand.
You do have my support, David.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I appreciate your understanding of the rules of the body of the city council. Mr. Cardenas is next, then Ms. Gruehl will follow.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure asking you a couple of questions in committee, and as usual, time is short, so I'll be limited to a couple of questions. Is the Department of Water and Power of the city of Los Angeles, is it the biggest in the nation of its kind as far as municipal authority?
Yes.
It's the biggest? Would that make it the baddest? Just kidding. But when I say the baddest, like the kids would say, meaning good, some people would think the Department of Water and Power, actually, some people in this room are disgusted with the Department of Water and Power and think that it's bad when it comes to the environment. When it comes to the environment, how much of our electrical output slash consumption comes from coal-burning plants?
Forty-seven percent.
Forty-seven percent, almost exactly half.
Yes.
We should improve that, meaning reduce the amount of coal-burning energy that we're actually producing and or receiving, correct?
Yes, we must.
Okay. And I agree with that. Easier said than done, but we got to figure out how to do it, right? Okay. With that, it was talking, you answered a question about MOUs and our obligations. Let me point out a particular obligation, and I need an answer from you, how you would handle current and or future obligations, because this is one that, in my personal opinion, got out of hand. We should have been committed, and we became committed, under a settlement, to actually do mitigations for the Owens Valley, which is north of us, and we had a tremendous impact on that community and the environment. But when we made the commitment as the city of Los Angeles, the head of the Department of Water and Power at the time only disclosed to us that potentially, it could be a commitment of one hundred and fifty million dollars or so. But that is still being dealt with today, and we're round figures, we're at about four hundred and fifty million dollars into our obligation and commitment. To me, it's not just about doing the right thing, it's incumbent upon you, the head of the department, to figure out how to do it right.
Yes.
How would you make sure that we do the right thing and we respect the ratepayer, the environment, and all of the politics around it, and do things right, instead of saying, one hundred and fifty million dollar obligation, let's embark on that, but yet later on down the road, everybody's shrugging their shoulders and saying, oh, well, four hundred and fifty million dollars, no big deal. My time, please.
Okay. I think you saw, yesterday, Councilmember, in response to certain questions about commitments for the future and holding rates in place and so on, I said that in the interest of being absolutely honest and in the interest of building up a relationship of trust with the city council, I would not make those commitments. And that is how I'm going to conduct myself with you. If something appears to me that's going to cost four hundred and fifteen million dollars, I want to assure you that I will tell you that. And then we'll make the decision as to how we're going to go and deal with it. But I'm, you know, for me, purity is the first thing in my life, integrity, and I'm not going to compromise it for anybody. So I just wanted to make that point and give you that assurance. The second point that I want to make is that our energy diversification, as much as it is a goal of idealism, as much as it is a goal in the service of the environment, as much as it is a goal for environmental leadership, as much as it is a goal to incubate a new industry and to benefit the city of Los Angeles as a result of growing a new green industry, it is all that, but it is also, at this point, a statutory obligation. It is what AB 32 will impose upon us. So we're not going to have, really, much of a choice in the matter. So the question becomes, how are we going to get there and make sure that we don't give our ratepayers thicker shock, that we plan for it financially? And I've said from day one, where the department is concerned, financial planning and environmental planning are indistinguishable. They have to go hand in hand together. Now, as of this moment in time, we've tripled our renewable portfolio standard, tripled it from three percent to eight percent. And we did that through the device of what is called the ECAP, which is the Energy Cost Adjustment Factor. And you don't find people, at this point, at any rate, complaining too much about the impact on their bills. The reason for that is that the ECAP is capped, the pass-through, and it is only a pass-through, there is no component for a base rate type of increase, it's merely a pass-through of costs, it's capped. So the increases that might be there are held back, are held back. But the device is structured in such a way as to be acceptable to our-- device is structured in such a way as to be acceptable to our underwriters. Um, but, but going forward, as we start to diversify more and more from coal, um, you know, my view is that we have assets, and if we have to liquidate those assets in order to gain, uh, the, the, the highest monetary value for the people of Los Angeles, that is what we must do, and we must use that money in order to reduce our own carbon dioxide profile. What I don't want to see happen is that, is that we get into a place where we're using the money of the people of Los Angeles in order to buy credits for compliance, in order to turn that money over to utilities that may currently have, really, by an accident of history, a hydro profile. So those are the kinds of pitfalls that I want to look out for. Uh, but I've, I pledged in public that foremost in my mind is providing service to the people of LA at the lowest possible rates.
A previous group of council members were on the council when this $150 million supposed commitment was made and signed, and, uh, I found out later on, when I got on the council, that there was actually, I think it was Parsons, who actually estimated that it could be upwards of $430 million. But when I looked on the council record in the council committee that oversees the department and on the council floor, there was never any record of that report being fortified for the people of Los Angeles or the policymakers in the city. So I just want to let you know, we need to make sure that we root out anybody or anything that would encourage anyone to withhold that kind of information from the people of Los Angeles or the policymakers as well. So, uh, I, I do have some more questions, and my time's out, so I'll push my button again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much, Ms. President. I did ask, get to ask, or I don't know if I asked as many questions as I, I gave you some, um, instructions, but ideas and issues that were important to me, and I will reiterate that for, um, my colleagues and for the, for the public. Um, as we talked about, number one, that I, I supported wholeheartedly your appointment as the general manager, and, and feel that your demonstrated success on a number of levels, but particularly as commissioner, understanding of the department, and your willingness to say, "There are some things we do right, and there are some things we do wrong, we need to change that." And most importantly, the transparency aspect of it, uh, which our neighborhood council representatives who are here alluded to, how critically important that is. Um, I know, not only the DWP, but any other issue, because I see Ms. Han shaking her head, too. I mean, we, you, you do better when you put all the facts out on the table and make a decision, and everyone knows what those facts are. Um, and that process is as important as a product or the ultimate recommendation. And so for me, uh, some of the issues that I outlined in committee dealt with contracting, um, the importance of ensuring that, uh, we have those solid contracts that are out there, that, that the audit committee that, um, I think we had as this council, and as part of Laura Chick's audit, had ensured that each of the proprietary departments has that audit committee, and that, um, I know we're going to check on, and maybe staff will get back to us, on the fact of whether or not those internal audits were also being shared, uh, with the city council, um, as well, uh, because we thought lessons learned, and again, in the era of trans, uh, trans, uh, transparency. Um, secondly, I think the other issue is, uh, for the San Fernando, those of us that represent the San Fernando Valley, and the infrastructure needs, to really know what those are. And as has been discussed, um, there have been years of not telling, even if it's painful, um, to the public how important that is. Also, on the issue of, um, uh, on our energy and making sure that, uh, we, we meet our goals sooner than the ones that the mayor has, has put forward, and where we are on the, the status of that, um, to let us know sooner rather than, than later on those, those issues. Um, and I know you didn't get to respond to much in council, uh, committee, so I may ask you to kind of respond to some of the things I, I mentioned today and before, but I, I do want to mention colleagues, as, um, mentioned by Mr. Nahai on Saturday, on his first official day as the interim, uh, he was there at Fire Station 88 and the Grossman Burn Center with so many of our employees, um, which you forget. And I, I, I took a, you know, a deep breath, and said, I, I had not really recognized that they put their lives on the line, and two gentlemen who had been electrocuted, um, who needed the services of, uh, the Grossman Burn Center, um, that these water and power employees, um, really do a tremendous job and risk their lives. And so we want to ensure that that safety is there, et cetera. So, my, I have the three seconds left on mine, so in that, if you could just kind of respond to what I said on, on Monday and commit, or whatever day that was, I guess it was yesterday.
It was yesterday.
Time-wise, yesterday morning, uh, to kind of respond to some of the issues I outlined in committee and today.
Okay, okay. I'm trying, I'm trying to remember all of them.
Because I talked really fast.
I think, I think the, the one question was about infrastructure, secondly, meeting our, our, our environmental goals.
Yes.
And what was the third issue?
Contracting.
Contracting, contracting. Um, and the, and the audit committee issue. Okay. First of all, regarding, regarding contracting, one of the, one of the first things, uh, that I did as soon as I was put on the, uh, commission was overhaul the contracting practices of the, of the department. Um, uh, we formed a contracts committee and gave it a great deal of power in order to, in order to oversee the entire contracting process, while making sure that commissioners didn't get into, into the meat of how a vendor was selected, because we wanted to make sure that there could never be a, you know, pay-to-play kind of accusation. Um, that has been a tremendous success in terms of, in terms of controlling contracting, but I believe it's not enough. Uh, it's not enough because, because we still have the same people who let the contracts actually administer the contracts. I believe we need to separate the two functions. We'll have certain people who go out there and, and, and put out the RFPs and, and select the vendors under the, under the, um, the oversight and supervision of the contracting committee. But once that contract has been entered into, those same people shouldn't be in charge of administering it, of making sure that the contractor does exactly what, what the entity is, is supposed to do. Uh, so how we do it, I haven't yet quite figured out, whether we separate water, power, whether we have an overall department deal with it. Uh, but that is the direction that I'm going in as far as, as far as contracting is concerned. Regarding the auditing, uh, committee, when I first got there, we actually, um, audited, we're using outside auditors, six departments, because there were these, there were murmurs of retaliation and discrimination practices, and I wanted to root it out immediately. I held three days of hearings and, and invited the employees to come and basically state, uh, you know, what it is that they thought was, was going on. I mean, that, there was a risk to take, but it was worth taking in order to get down to the bottom of these things. But as a result of all of that, we formed a very strong internal investigations unit to deal with these issues, and we, and we reinforced the audit unit with respect to contract issues. But as I say, I don't think it's enough. I want to separate the two functions. And, and on the question of separate, and the question of, of, of sharing what the audit committee finds out and its reports with the city council, I certainly would have no objection to that whatsoever. Um, regarding, uh, meeting the, the environmental goals, I think, I think as of this moment in time, you know, we're driven by AB 32. Um, right now, our profile is something like 13 million, between 13 and 16 million metric tons of, of CO2 emissions annually. Uh, the rate is about 1,300 pounds per megawatt hour. That is high. Um, you know, when you see graphs of how we do in comparison to other utilities, um, it is, it is not good. We've made great strides. We've brought that back down by about 4%, I think, over the last few years, but we've got to accelerate that. And we've got to accelerate it in a way that doesn't damage the ratepayer, and that makes sure that it has no impact on our low-income and on our, and our lifeline customers. But that, I think, is going to be a central challenge going forward. I think 20% by 2010, we're, we're on track for that. 30%, 35% by 2020 poses greater challenges, including transmission, where we come to, where we come to, uh, you know, colliding environmental agendas. It's very interesting, the, the kind of debates that are going on in the environmental community right now. But the greater good, I think, eventually has to, has to prevail. Um, and then finally, with respect to infrastructure, as I said, I'm committed to our power reliability program, committed to making sure that, um, that, uh, that we upgrade and, and reinvigorate our infrastructure, that we staff up to meet it. Um, you know, I was there on the phone on Labor Day, uh, um, every hour with staff, as they were telling me exactly how it was that our infrastructure was faring. And, um, you know, at the end of it, I scratched my head, I said, "It's no way to run a utility." And I, I don't want to personally have to go through another Labor Day like that.
That's right.
Did I cover the...
You did. And, and then the only other, and I, because I'm 15 seconds over, um, but just the, the last, uh, piece of that, um, of course, now that just went in and out of my head, because there was another piece, um, that I had. I'll remember. Shoot.
That's why we pressed our buttons a second time.
I lost my 15 seconds. I know, I had a moment.
All right. We'll, we'll come right back to...
A pre-senior moment.
Soon, Ms. Gruel.
It'll, it'll come back, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Ms. Han is our next speaker. Ms. Han?
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Recipient of the City of Justice Award, Ms. Han.
Yay. Thank you, thank you. Um, I just wanted to touch a couple of issues. One was, um, our neighborhood council, uh, DWP Oversight Committee. Uh, they, uh, decided not to support the rate increase, because one of the reasons was they, they felt like they weren't given their 120 days, uh, opportunity to review the facts, look at the facts, um, and they felt like that was provided them in the MOU. Um, the other thing, um, they've expressed is that there's been a promise that, um, we would have three area liaisons, uh, that would report directly to, to Wendy Yancey, uh, but would be more, uh, more local to, uh, the regions in the city with our neighborhood councils. Can I get your assurance that, uh, you're, we're really going to, um, take to heart this MOU? We're going to, uh, really do what it says, as, as, uh, my council member, Wendy Gruel, said, "Let's get all, let's always tell the truth, let's get all the facts out there. Uh, we need our ratepayers out there as our partners, uh, as we move forward." And I'd like to hear your comments, particularly on the area liaisons that, uh, we think you should, should be hired. Hold my time.
I, I certainly...
You hold my time.
I certainly view the neighborhood councils as, as assets, as allies, as resources, as ways of getting out, uh, our message. Um, I've been personally chagrined that we, that we came to the place where they felt unable to, to support the, the rate increases. Um, so in terms of observing the MOU, in terms of moving forward with them, in terms of building bridges to the neighborhood council community altogether, I, I certainly am going to do that. I've already had, uh, conversations with the Department of, of Neighborhood Empowerment, um, uh, in order to, to perhaps have regional meetings, to go around to make sure that, that, that they talk to me, that they see me, that I hear, uh, their, their concerns. Um, some things, uh, where I think the department fell short, even though there was an immense amount of outreach that was done, there were like 35 meetings with the neighborhood councils. So it wasn't for lack of effort, but I think, but I think the department needs to start to speak a different language. We can't go out to the neighborhood councils and talk about unfreezing the ECAP, as a, as a phrase, and, and, and expect that that won't be met with at least a, a fair amount of skepticism. So I think, I think we need to, I think we need to change our approach a bit. I think we need to, to do a great deal more outreach, and we're going to have some honest disagreements with the neighborhood councils as well. For instance, the 120-day issue is an area on which we disagree. Um, I've looked at the MOU, I think we met the 120-day obligation. I know Solidad, uh, very, very strongly disagrees with that. Regarding the question of, of the liaisons, uh, I think, I think they're absolutely right. Um, uh, Winifred Yancey is a, is a tremendous asset to the department, but she's dealing with all kinds of, of requests that are coming her way. I think she needs assistance. Uh, I plan to ensure that she gets it.
Good. Okay, um, I'm, I'm going to talk a little bit about water. I know we have the electricity side, but let's talk about water. Um, you know, there are some that say what the water crisis is, you know, next to the global warming crisis. I mean, I, I've heard people say it's, uh, of catastrophic consequence, um, the potential water shortage that's happening. Um, it's been said that a good leader takes us where we want to go, and a great leader takes us where we ought to go. I'd love to hear from you where we ought to go in Los Angeles in terms of water conservation. One of the things that I think we've all been hesitant to tackle, review, assess, is our tiered, uh, rate structure that has not been reviewed since 1994. Um, isn't the best way to encourage conservation is to make people pay for what they use? Why should we still have a system in Los Angeles where people who own large lots, uh, and are, have beautiful landscaping, beautiful lawns, why are they subsidized by, you know, working men and women in Los Angeles who have smaller lots? Uh, 70% of all the water usage is used outside of the home. I, I find that fascinating, that we still have a system that really encourages people to have huge lots that are landscaped. Seems to me if you buy a home with a large lot, you should pay for, uh, the water that you use to, uh, keep that landscaping beautiful. It doesn't seem to encourage drought-resistant landscaping, it doesn't seem to encourage water conservation. I think we haven't tackled that yet. What do you think?
All right, let, let's start first with the, with the, with the catastrophe, um, scenario issue. Um, uh, somebody, when, when I was on the commission, somebody said to me, you know, "Well, don't you worry about, about the water situation?" And I said, uh, I wasn't appointed to the commission to worry, I was appointed to the commission to act. And, and I would give the same response here. Yeah, we are, we do face a crisis, there's no doubt about it. Um, but it's a, but it's a crisis that I think, I think we can manage if we can act now, and if, if we have the political courage and the financial wherewithal to do it. Uh, where, where must we go? The situation we have right now, just to say it very quickly, is that we're very heavily, uh, dependent on imported water, uh, from the Sierras, from the Colorado River, from the state water project. All of those sources are under great pressure. As a result, right now, today, we buy 76% of our water from the Metropolitan Water District, 76%. Normally, it's around 30%. The, the snowpack in the Sierras right now is about 4% of normal. So we have to start to plan now to gain some measure of independence. That means we have to move for water recycling. The Times wrote an editorial today about water recycling, about what is called indirect potable use.
Right.
Um, you know, this may, you said, "Where must we go?" We must go there. Um, and, and we must have an honest conversation. This is not the same situation as we were in, you know, back many years ago, when people were afraid of water recycling. The technology has advanced, you know, beyond recognition now. We can do this safely. They do it in England, where they have more rainfall than we could ever, I think, hope to have here in, here in Los Angeles. Um, so water recycling, aquifer remediation, we've got the San Fernando Valley aquifer, it's a vast aquifer, it is contaminated. We've got to hold our polluters to account. We have to have the courage to do that, and we've got to get the money to clean up that aquifer. Stormwater capture, 50% of our rainfall is wasted. What sense does that make when you're living in a semi-arid desert? So we must move more towards stormwater we capture. Outside irrigation, we have purple pipe technology, we can, we, we can start by our golf courses and our medians and our parks and use recycled water for those, but eventually, we have to move that technology to serve all outside uses, so that we have our potable water for our showers, our kitchens, our drinking water, but not in order to irrigate, uh, our outside. That's where we ought to go. Um, and we need to, we need to pressure Sacramento, pressure the federal government, in order to get the money in order to do that. We tried last year, uh, we were not successful. Uh, we must go to that well again, uh, because, because there, there are monies under Prop 84, for instance, that can be used for a lot of these projects. And now back to the, to the, to the issue that, that drew applause from some people back there, you know. I, I wasn't there in 1994 when, uh, when, when the ingredients came, came together in, in, in order to have the tiered water rates, which take account not only of lot size, but of temperature, of household size, family size, a, a whole bunch of other things. Um, uh, but I think, given our water shortage, uh, and given the fact that we're at some point going to have to talk about shortage rates, um, I, I anticipate that that conversation will, will come up again.
Well, I, I appreciate your leadership. I think, uh, for me, I would, you know, I'm, I'm willing to accept, uh, temperature and maybe family size, but, uh, lot size to me is just seems to be an area we need to quit subsidizing in the City of Los Angeles. But I think you're going to find more political will and courage today than maybe we had in 1994, to, uh, uh, really act now to prevent, uh, what could be a very devastating water shortage.
Well, at, at the department now, I've, um, I've, I've started the process to, to look and examine shortage rates, uh, because I think the next step is going to be the enforcement of, of laws that... rates, because I think the next step is going to be the enforcement of laws that we have already on the books about water conservation, about watering lawns, so on and so forth. But at some point, if those strategies don't work, and if our dry spell continues, shortage rates are going to be the means by which we will most incentivize people to conserve, so...
Thank you. You have my support.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and my apologies, I wasn't able to vote on your nomination in committee, but you would have had my vote, and I want to thank you for stepping forward. This is probably the biggest challenge of any department, when you look at the breadth of what you have to deal with, the size of the department, and really the years of neglect because of failed political leadership, I believe, of stepping forward, telling the truth, doing it in a transparent way, and saying what we need to do to continue an infrastructure. People of LA are very lucky, because we have water and power that is cheaper, and in some cases as reliable as are surrounding utilities and throughout the nation. They have been neglected because they haven't been told the truth, that 15 years, we didn't need to do anything to raise those rates, and that somehow we could continue to see that water flow without any negative impact, that power would be reliable, and we're beginning to see that crack at the seams. The last two summers, I think, we saw that, and we've had some very good discussions about that. I've been very clear about what I want for the ratepayers and the people of Los Angeles, four things: reliable water and power, that they can depend on, making sure that they have clear information when there is a problem with either of those, but predominantly with power, of knowing when there's outages, what the plan is to get the power back on. Third, the people, the actual staff implementing both of those, the information side as well as the infrastructure side. And fourth, doing that in an environmentally and green way. Starting with the fourth, you know, I think there's nobody who's been better qualified coming into this job on the environmental front, and I appreciate our mutual friends from the environmental community, and I appreciate the work we've been able to do together with a number of different hats on, working on the environmental side. So I will put that aside, even though we had a very good discussion in committee about some of the very same things, recharging our aquifers, green streets. Water conservation, I would just add again, as we've talked about privately, we've got huge pipes that are just flowing every single day in Elysian Park. While we have drought busters out there, the neighborhood's looking for smaller leaks, we've got a huge problem there in Elysian Park we must fix, and we must do that rapidly with Wreckin Parks and DWP together. In terms of the staffing and in terms of the full information, the reliability, I know that there's a connection between having those and any rate increase. Of course, that's the only responsible way of looking at them. I remain unconvinced so far, though, about the rate increase without some real guidelines of saying, "We will deliver X by Y date," not holding you to the exact point, the exact date, but at least as benchmarks, which establish a goal for two years, five years out, of when people can expect a more reliable infrastructure. Took many years to degrade, it won't be put back in place overnight, but that's our faith with our ratepayers and the people of Los Angeles. So I'm excited you're coming on at this moment, but I also want you to feel comfortable with what the department is putting forward as those goals and timelines, as they have begun to do. So really, my only question, because I still have that hesitation, I think we can continue to do more oversight, we can continue to have better outreach with our neighborhood councils along the lines of what you talked about, and our business community, who's very engaged. But tell us a little bit about those goals, and if they are ones that need to be tweaked or reformed a little bit, what is your plan to make sure, as we look at power rate increase? And, you know, I still, at this day, know that we need to do it, but don't want to do it until we know that it's going to be money well spent, to make us reassured about that, because we know that's coming back very soon.
Let me start by saying this, and I appreciate your comments, and we spoke about them in private, and you made them clear again yesterday, and I appreciate that. On the infrastructure side, on the power side, on the water side, I don't know how to make it clearer. Our infrastructure is deteriorating and decaying, and if we don't make the necessary investment in order to upgrade it and reinvigorate it, we will continue to have worse problems. What was done two summers ago may not have been sufficient, the 3,000 transformers and the improvements that were made in the call center, but last summer would have been, by degrees, a great deal worse, had those things not been done. And the next summer may be even worse if we don't mobilize now to do some things about them. The power reliability program that has been put forward, and you were gracious in taking my responses, I offered it yesterday, are, I would couch them again, as well-considered projections. Well-considered projections. I can't say that they're promises, because I cannot allow myself to get into a situation, especially with you, especially given our relationship, in which six months from now some of those projections are missed, and you feel that you were somehow not told the entire story. What I can commit, though, and what I will commit, is to have a protocol put in place by which those benchmarks are monitored in the most stringent and vigorous way that you and I can sit down and conjure up together, so that you will never be put in a position of saying that you did not know that something that was supposed to be happening, or that which the projection said would be happening, has not happened, and you were not provided with a proper explanation for it. Now, in terms of oversight layers, it is difficult to imagine one, you know, more complete than what the DWP has, you know?
And I agree, but it's more of the focused oversight, I think, rather than the broad one, because you're right, there's a million people that you report to, and a million people have oversight, but if there's a group that's tasked with specifically any increase, make sure it's with the power reliability, that's the mission that we're looking for, because when you have such a broad one, sometimes it gets lost.
Right, yeah, and you won't get any kind of an argument from me on that issue. I've already called, I've already urged the president of the commission to appoint an internal oversight committee. I'm happy to work with the oversight committee that the city council wishes to impose. I would make a couple of requests, though. We do not want to get to a place where we have an oversight committee which exercises veto control, which exercises the kind of control that can tell the department how to do its job, but if this is an oversight committee that is there to, quotes, "trust but verify," that is there in an advisory capacity, that is there in a reporting capacity, I will pledge to you my personal cooperation within.
Okay, and I know I'm over, so I'll conclude with this. If we could have, in your first 60 days, if you will look at those PRP, you know, you said six months, but really focus, because there's a bit of faith that goes into this vote, and I have that faith in you, and that's why I'm supporting you, because of who you are. And I want to give you that time for the leadership, but it comes at that moment when the public is expecting us, if we're looking at power rate increases, to really be sure that it's money well spent, that it won't be, we want that honesty, we want that clarity. Give us at least the beginning in 60 days from your confirmation and coming on formally, whether or not you think those are still good goals, and if there's any red flags that come up and say, you know, "This was totally unrealistic," have your people, have your team look at that immediately and report back to us. I think that'll give us a lot of reassurance communicating with the people of Los Angeles, that what happened the last two summers is beginning to be turned around.
Right, since I can't write with my right hand, let me make sure that that's being recorded.
You've got good people writing notes for you, so don't worry. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labanche.
For stepping up, selected by Mayor Villarosa. Couple things, and I'm going to go over. This is great water by the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. I would like to see us have an ability, whether it takes a charter change, and Jerry Miller, I may want a charter change so we could sell our quality water, especially at venues throughout the city where they sell it at enormous prices. This is good water, we should have that, so I wanted to ask that, and I may need a charter change, so I'd like to do that. Number two, I love people who work for the city, but I also believe everyone, every year who works for the city should have a review. There's no review, there's no employee review. Can you tell me your opinion on annual review of employees?
You know, from day one, it's been two years, though, from day one I called for evaluations throughout the department. There was an article written in The Times on it, because I was so shocked that the department doesn't have evaluations, and coming from the private sector, that's unheard of.
And from the top, all the way down?
Yes, and it has to start from the top.
Right.
It has to start from the top, because it's the leadership that has to provide the example. I think in the consultations and discussions with the managers, we're starting to move towards that position. So I'm optimistic that we'll start to make headway.
Very good. Water, okay, employee review, now this is a tough one. Back in like 1992, they took over negotiation of contracts for employees from City Hall to Water and Power. The CEO's office negotiates contracts. Could we look at having it all done here at the City Hall? I'm for paying people, but also want people to work hard for the people, as many all of us do throughout. But the negotiations, if we bring it under one tent, so to speak, would you be open to that?
We spoke about this when you were kind enough to meet with me in person. I'd love to sit with you and your staff and consider all of the ramifications of doing that. I haven't thought it through as to what it would be, but...
Think it through, that's all I'm asking, David.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. Area liaisons, Ms. Han spoke about it, for you to be successful, you have to have a team of people, and the Public Affairs Unit needs to grow, and liaison to neighborhood associations, business groups, et cetera, that's key and important, real important. I also think that Owens Valley is real important, and I don't want to lose our ability up there, and I want to share and do the right thing. I think you made a great statement there, there it is, take it back when you rededicated the diversion, but I also want to let the people know that we care about them. You know, 100 years ago, ladies and gentlemen, was when Mulholland put forth a bond, which completed 1913, I believe, for the aqueduct, which is so important. So I have one more question, so I have to punch my button again, and I'll see you momentarily.
I'll give you, if you want more questions, only four seconds over, and everyone else went a little bit over, so if you'd like to ask your question.
One more question, here's my Department of Water and Power bill right now, and most of it is the city's funds. My city's funds here is 124 for energy use and 52 for water use, but I don't know if it's as clear to say that I'm doing, I am doing less this year than I did last year. See if you can make it clearer, so people understand and be part of the solution of helping us conserve energy and water. You know, do an instant poll, ask people if they could really fully understand their bills on that, because I think it could be simplified a little bit, too. And also, on the other hand, on the municipal services, which you have nothing to do, is our capota for sewer service charge, civil utility tax, solid resources fee, which is trash, and state energy surcharge for $120. Water power is in our community every day, and there's a big job there. I pledge to help you any way I can, and get very good utility people that are there around you to help you do the job that's necessary for Los Angeles, in the great tradition of William Mulholland to Ron Deaton. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like, can I make a comment on the Owens Valley?
Yes.
Very quickly, because, you know, I too feel absolutely that we need to have very close relationships with the communities of the Owens Valley. This is why last, it's two years ago, I think, for the first time in a century, the commission led an official delegation to the Owens Valley in order to build those bridges, and we've benefited tremendously by it, and I'm going to continue to do that. I think the Owens Valley is a great asset to us.
Not just over, but Upper Colorado, Lower Colorado, and everywhere along the system. Thank you, David.
You're welcome. Mr. Alikon.
Well, first, Madam Chair, hearing the great tradition of William Mulholland, I was hoping that you could do the opposite of what William Mulholland did, but Mr. Labange, LA's greatest cheerleader, we got it. Mr. Nahai, in committee, yesterday I posed a question to you that frankly you didn't have enough time to think about, or enough time to answer in any way that I think you would like to be able to answer that question, so I'm going to be offering you that opportunity again, now that you've had about 24 hours to consider it. The Department of Water and Power is a monolithic institution that has been driven by this underlying history that was created by Mr. Mulholland. Anybody that saw Chinatown understands that the purpose of the Department of Water and Power historically has been to empower the wealthy, to create economic development, and many times that has been done in a way that flies in the face of the greater interests of the society of Los Angeles, including allowing businesses to get power at the same time they're destroying our air, allowing them to get water at the same time they're damaging our river system, allowing them to get these things without additional surcharges, and in fact, at discount rates, when in fact we ought to be charging them for the damage that they're causing, and then we turn around and ask the least among us to pay high rates, and not in comparison to the industry, because I think the industry's all screwed up. I think what we need in terms of DWP is a leader, not a manager, not somebody to manage the existing system the way it was, because I don't like the way it was, and I think we need to be a new DWP that responds to the needs of the public, that does address the environmental concerns, that surcharges businesses when they degrade our environment, and creates a new vision. In a book called Leadership, written by James McGregor Burns, he talks about the difference between transactional leadership and transformational leadership. So my question to you, in the context of our discussion yesterday, is are you going to be a transactional leader and embrace the institutional, monolithic, historic history of the Department of Water and Power, or are you going to be a transformational leader to bring DWP in a position of changing Los Angeles for the improvement of our environment, to bring equity into the ratepaying system so that the least among us are not burdened with pain, the higher proportion of rates compared to their income, to benefit employers who create jobs from Los Angeles residents and not give them up to Santa Clarita residents, and then turn around and allow them to drive into our streets and congest our highways and make our life miserable? The manager of Department of Water and Power has a tremendous opportunity to be a transformational leader, and I want to know why you think you can be a transformational leader.
Well, I certainly didn't give up all that I've given up to take this position in order to be a caretaker, nor did Mayor Villarosa tap me to take this position, because he thought that I would just sit there and manage things exactly as they have been. I think he asked me to do this because he saw that over the last two years, even as an outside commissioner, I brought about changes that really, in the history of the department, I think some would describe as remarkable. And I've been that way with respect to every post that I've taken, whether it was the Regional Water Board, or the Santa Monica Bay Commission, or in the private sector. So I certainly regard myself as somebody who's here to change things. Now, many people, I think, expected me that those changes will be environmental, but if somebody was to take a look at my record at DWP, they would see that I've made as many changes internally with respect to promotions, grievances, disciplinary proceedings, rooting out retaliation and discriminatory practices. So now we come to the issue of equity, and how we deal with our ratepayers altogether. I've said over and over again that I'm absolutely committed to taking care of our low-income customers, that I'm absolutely committed to taking care of our lifeline customers, in all of these conversations of rate restructure and rate increases. That has been among the very first questions that I've posed to our staff, is how it is that those people who are unable to fend for themselves are going to be affected by our actions. The questions that you're posing, though, are larger ones, because you're posing questions about the very system of how it is that we deliver water, how it is that we deliver power, and to what extent can this monopoly of power and water delivery be used as an instrument to impose societal change? I get what you're saying, and I see it in various things that we do. We talked about the solar program, for instance, we talked about efficiency, we talked about the fact that those who are able to afford it are able to put in, you know, cost-reducing appliances in their buildings, whereas, you know, somebody who isn't able to afford that is going to be hit with higher rates. And I didn't give you a full answer yesterday, because I don't have a plan for you right now. What I can offer you is that I'm not myopic to what it is that you're saying, and that nor am I at all oblivious to the power of the utility to promote that kind of change. Now, how have I been doing it? I've been doing it by supporting the Infrastructure Academy. I've been doing it by championing outreach to small businesses. I've been doing it by making sure that we go out into less advantaged communities and try to give them opportunities to work at DWP. I've been doing it by making sure that in our contracting... I've been doing it by making sure that in our contracting practices, we make our contractors set aside, you know, 3% of the contract amount for training, for empowerment, for education of those who may not be able to afford it themselves. So, you know, I've been doing it, and I'm committed to do it in all of these ways. There may be stronger ways of doing it in a way that doesn't immediately cause an upheaval. Because with change, sometimes it has to be incremental. Sometimes you have to make sure that you bring people along in a way that isn't sudden, that isn't abrupt. But the points that you're making, Councilmember, are not lost on me. And I don't know whether that's a satisfactory answer for you, but it's as far as I'm willing to go today.
Satisfactory answer will come in your next review, but I'm honored to give you my support, because I do believe you will be a transformational leader, and anything short of that is probably not what we need for the Department of Water and Power.
I think that's...
We can hire a lot of managers. We need a leader.
I think that's right. I think that's why I've stepped up this. And I believe we're going to meet later on today?
Yeah, today.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. You're really doing great with everybody here. You know, it's a love fest, too, because you're a brilliant guy. First, I want to thank the mayor. Again, a brilliant move, like Rita Robertson, we went through the love fest yesterday. You're fantastic, and it was a great choice. He's showing real leadership when he picks good people like you. So, okay, Antonio on this one. Now, here's some quick questions, okay? Hotline. You know, the other day, I'm going on Centinela by Palms, and then I'm going towards Santa Monica Airport, and the lights are on 24/7. Well, turn the lights off at night. In the morning, of course, you want them on at night. Day after day after day, the lights were on. So I called, and I said, "Turn those damn lights off." Well, we find out it's a transformer of some sort. Days and days go by, and nobody turned them off. So I'm in Whole Foods shopping, and customers come up to me, and they said, "You know, you want a rate increase, and at the other time, you don't turn off your lights." So little things like that really upset me and my constituents. So I want you to create a hotline where someone can call in. The 3-1-1 doesn't make it all the way where it needs to go. You need to have a hotline where somebody can call in and say, "Hey, there's a transformer out," or whatever. We don't know the technical thing, but we see the lights on during the bright sunny day, and they should be shut off. So let's get a hotline for that and get a hotline tied in. Also, if we have an outage of something happening, that they can get into somebody that's real and warm and can talk to them. I'd like to hear back from you on a hotline, okay? The water, Tom talks about the clean water and all this. The problem with the water is the pipe system and the filtration system, by the time it gets to your house, the old pipes through the system throughout the city. Frankly, I have bottled water to drink at home. I don't want to do that. You could do a better service for us if you offered us some coal thing that you tie on to your system, and you are filtering your own water. Can we do something like that?
Would you like me to respond to...
Hold on, yeah, one more, a couple of quick questions. I'm happy to hear you're working good with Brian Darcy of Labor. There has to be a good, close-working relationship so we don't have any issues going down the road. Yeah, answer me on this one.
Okay. Right. First one regarding the hotline, I think that is a great idea. We need to do it both on the water side and on the power side as well, because I agree 3-1-1 has its limitations. We're going to be making extensive changes in our customer relations protocols. We're going to be making great changes in the call center. We're going to be investing in new technologies so that when somebody calls in during an outage, as anxious as they are, they can actually be given some kind of a timeframe, at least that a crew is going to be dispatched. And various changes like that in order to bring down the level of anxiety of people at times of crisis. So I think the hotline adds to that, and I think as we start to adopt an even greater conservation ethos in the city, it's a great way of doing that. What was your first question, Councilmember?
Well, the first one was the water itself getting to your home here was another issue.
Okay. The issue there is that we deliver very good, very high-quality water to the border of the house. That water then has to traverse the inside of the house through the internal pipes in order to come out of the faucet. The department doesn't have any right to go inside the house in order to deal with the condition of the pipes. And this is why you get people such as me. I drink the water that comes out of my pipes, and it's wonderful, whereas others complain that the water, when it comes out of their pipes, is discovered or doesn't smell right. And I think we've tried from time to time to get the message out that this is a matter of taking care of your internal pipes. I actually wrote a letter to The Times about it. But perhaps we need to do a better job of communicating that message and letting people know that they can go out and purchase carbon filters, which would be helpful.
Well, why don't you promote carbon filters through DWP, where a person could maybe get one from you, and DWP could help us, or somehow a relationship where a person understands they can put a carbon filter on their system? A lot of people can't afford to change their piping system in their house.
Yes, I realize that. But let's, you know, I don't want to be promoting vendors' products or something like that, but we do it with compact fluorescent lights, so maybe we can do something like this with carbon filters as well.
Good, okay.
Again, if...
Okay, you're looking at yourself.
Somebody would write some notes for me.
Okay. While you're thinking of that, let's just talk about sunny Southern California.
Yeah.
Okay, we are sunny Southern California. We have a lot of flat roofs, both government buildings and private sector buildings. Could you put together an aggressive program for solar paneling on all government buildings that are flat as a first step?
Yes.
And then a private sector sharing, subsidizing, support systems where our flat roofs, as private sector people, our homes and all, could end up with solar panels?
Right. I'm personally giving a great deal of thought to this. I'm committed to solar power, because we have such an abundant amount of it here in Los Angeles. The problem, of course, is that even the most expensive other type of renewable can be delivered at around 10 cents a kilowatt hour. Solar comes in twice, three times, sometimes four times that amount.
Right.
So the question becomes for us, how do we do it in basin? How do we hopefully actually use Los Angeles city workers in order to do it and deliver that power at a price that isn't going to bankrupt the Treasury? And I think the way, I think the way it's coming together, I think, in my analysis, is that if we can use a private party as the installer so that we can secure the tax credits, we may, in that way, be able to reduce...
Brilliant.
...the price of it. And then, I think, the other thing that we need to do, Councilmember, is that we have to look at it in a different way. We have to look at it as a societal program, as something that is going to help train people, as something that is going to provide jobs to people, as something that is going to advance us. You take a look at Germany right now. Germany, Germany, that doesn't have anywhere near the abundance of solar power that we do, is today a world leader. But that's because the government has stepped up and subsidized it.
Right.
You know? And has made that investment, because the government, I think, had the foresight to see that at some point, getting independence from Middle East oil is a matter of national security.
Exactly.
So we need to think about, I think, renewables as a whole in broader terms as we go forward here.
Let me know how we can help you on that, because you're right on the mark. You're a visionary, you're thinking out of the box. I don't want to be dependent on anybody's foreign source of energy. We are sunny Southern California, and the day has come when we should have solar panels everywhere and just make it absolutely a no-brainer. All right, metering. Would you talk about metering and how we're going to go forward with time-of-use metering?
Well, this time-of-use metering, tiered rates, these are all part of what we're proposing as our rate restructure. We could even go further. For instance, other utilities have interruptible rates for folks, in which somebody can say, "Look, it's very hot. I'm not going to use my air conditioning."
Right.
"I'm, in effect, going to return that power to the system." I think we need to be open to all of these things, but, you know, at the same time, I see that our rate increase proposals have languished to a certain extent. Our rate restructure proposals have, you know, are mired to a certain extent. And I think, you know, I'm going to have to figure out how better to work with this body, so that these things that we absolutely have to do, we manage to do. And I think the first step is to reestablish trust and confidence.
And we look forward to, and we know you can do it, you know, this tiering of different rates. You'll have water wars in the city if my people on the West Side end up paying more than the people in the Valley. Better look twice at that, because it's a big issue. And of course, neighborhood councils need to be engaged in this process early on all the time. I believe in neighborhood councils in the grassroots community. But if the Valley's going to get a cheaper water rate, then my West Side people, you know, we're going to have some real problems. You're going to have to really work that through to get my support on something like that.
I completely understand. At the same time, if I determine that shortage rates are something that we have to have in order to encourage conservation, you know, I'm going to have to come before this body and have that conversation. I can't shy away from what I believe in my heart is the right thing to do. But that bridge isn't before us right this year.
Well, I just want to thank you for stepping to the plate. I mean, you're an incredible guy, you're a great resource, you're a treasure to our city, and I'm thrilled that you're taking this position.
You're very generous. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar, followed by Mr. Weiss.
Thank you. And Mr. Nahai, I'm really excited about your appointment. I think you are the right leader to lead the DWP at this time. I think you have the knowledge of the department, the leadership skills, and I'm really looking forward to you leading the DWP. Lots of work ahead, as was mentioned, around here. There are so many things we need to address in the department. One of the things, and I know we'll be working together to address a lot of those issues, I do want to mention one thing that's on top of my mind today, it's just one issue. The city of Los Angeles currently provides a 10% discount rate to low-income residents for the use of our services from DWP. Other similar agencies, such as a San Diego, forget the name, their energy provider, as well as our other local provider, Edison, they provide a 50% discount. That's using the same criteria to qualify for low-income residents. And through the process of discussing the rate increases here, I've asked your staff, soon-to-be staff, hopefully this goes through, to look into that and provide us a thorough analysis as to why is that, to look at things as geography, different markets, et cetera. But if there is any reason why we can provide a higher discount, I think we should do it. I know that it will take away from our revenue, given that we are asking for an increase, but that's something that we should do in order for us to show a commitment, particularly in light of asking for more, an increase, to our low-income residents who have been hard-hit by an increase of cost and energy in many different respects, not only in water and energy, but other types of resources that we use just to get through the day. So just an issue to put out there for you. Also, I think we could do a much better job in outreach to the people who do qualify. We put those in the bills, we try to do as much as we can, but I've seen some numbers that tells me we can do a lot better to get more people to take advantage of this discount. And as you may know, it's, we got to use different cultural avenues to reach out to these people, language issues, a lot of ways that we should be thinking about more creatively to get to these consumers who need the help. And so I just ask you to put that on your radar. At the end of the day, you know, we, these people who are on low income and have to live that way, many of us forget what it means to put out a few more dollars, you know, where we're saying there's going to be an increase of a couple, a few dollars. But for a lot of folks, it's a huge hit, and we should be thinking about these folks while we talk about this rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you very much. When you had this conversation with staff, did they agree with the premise that we're at 10% and the surrounding utilities are at 50%?
They went back to look at that, and the information that had gone on that was on our website, their website, very public information, but I wanted us to do a thorough analysis of what that meant for our revenues. Is there a reason why we have a lower discount than other similar agencies? So I think that's going to come back, the report's going to come back to us in our Joint Committee of Budget and Finance and Energy. So I look forward to getting that. But I wanted to raise that here in a very public manner, while probably the whole department's paying attention to this, because I think we should keep an eye on that and think about our low-income residents as we move forward with our rate increase.
Yeah, and not only will I keep an eye on it, one of the principal reasons why I'm doing this is because a municipal utility is a nonprofit entity, and therefore it has the ability to improve matters socially for the residents of the city. I didn't know those numbers. Thank you for sharing that with me, Councilmember, and if that's true, there either has to be a very good explanation for it, or we need to change it, because I know the department prides itself on taking good care of our low-income and lifeline customers. And I want to make sure that in whatever we do, whatever rate increases we end up having, whatever rate restructuring we do, that those people who are just unable to take care of themselves as well as you and I are able to, that we make sure we never forget them and that we take good care of them. So I'm absolutely committed to that.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. I think we're in for a new era for DWP, and I think you're going to take us to a better service for our residents and to build that infrastructure we need to rebuild and provide the type of service we know we can. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Madam President. It's been a long hearing. We'll be well into the next decade's snowpack issues before it ends, so let me just say, by way of a comment, not a question, that I've always admired you. I have always enjoyed working with you and learned so much from you. We've served on a number of bodies and had a number of opportunities to work together. I can't think of anyone in Los Angeles whom I hold in higher esteem as a professional than you, and I look forward to taking the lead from you on so many important issues in the next several years in our city. Thank you, David, for making this tremendous sacrifice in your life, which you've told me a little bit about, but I know the reason you're doing it is that you are just burning to do public service. That's why your resume looks the way it looks, and that's why, in a sense, you're going to have to clear the decks on your whole resume, public and private, just to do this form of service. Thank you so much, David.
Thank you. Thank you very much. How generous of you. Thank you.
And before we go to Cardenas, Mr. Weston has pressed his for the first time. Mr. Weston.
Thank you, Madam President and member. I'm going to steal from Jack Weiss's playbook and just to stand to say how excited I am with this appointment, and that I look forward to working with you in the future. You are a good man, has a good relationship with members of my staff, so I think we're going to do good things together. So kudos to you and thanks for making this sacrifice. It's going to be a kick-butt ride. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Weston. And allow me to compliment you on your very fine staff.
Yes, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the questions that we talked about in committee is, how are you going to balance the need and the pressures about being better to the environment when, at the same time, some of the other core values and responsibilities of the department is to remember that they are responsible for reliability, cost, and capacity? How are you going to do that?
You know, I've had to balance my environmental inclinations and my practical obligations now for a long time. I've served for 10 years on the Regional Water Board, and every day, one wants to do the right thing for the environment, but there are fiscal constraints, there are political constraints...
Legal?
I'm sorry?
And legal constraints?
And legal constraints. So I'm no stranger to the Balancing Act that's involved there. With respect to the, and I think my two years of service so far at the department as Commission Vice President and President would also attest to the fact that I'm a very level-headed fellow, and that while the department both has to legally and has to, from a point of leadership, to move into a greener direction, that that has to be done with very careful planning and with an understanding of all of the real constraints that we've just talked about, fiscal, legal, political. And we also had a conversation yesterday about engineers and environmentalists, as I recollect.
There is such thing as an environmental engineer, right?
Of course. No, and I actually believe, by the way, that more and... No, and I, and I actually believe, by the way, that more and more engineers are also becoming environmentalists. This is what is going to be, this new industry, that we're going to help foster in this city. This is, you know, and I've, I've seen this firsthand, for instance, at the regional water board, we adopt TMDLs. As a result of the adoption of that, there is an entire cottage industry that's grown up of engineers who are able now to, to, to bring forward new inventions for, for water filtration and infiltration and, and stormwater capture and so on. And, and you know, and the, the folks that are driving the renewables industry, the wind, solar, geothermal, these are engineers who are able, who are able to, to apply their talents, you know, for the, for the betterment of, of humanity, so, but I, but I, I'm very cognizant of the fact that I, that we have right now a coal and gas utility, and on the power side, to change its direction is going to be a painstaking, slow and very deliberate process. And, and I, you know, and I'm not going to charge headlong in a, in a way that, that doesn't consider all of the ramifications of, of what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. I want to bring two examples that the departments had to deal with and ask you how you might deal with such a situation. One of them is, for example, a wind farm that we, that we have up north, it's been constructed, et cetera, and all of a sudden, an environmental group, because of the possibility of these wind turbines killing birds, are actually using legal means to not only stop our wind farm, but other wind farms around the country. Again, environmental community, you have a lot of friends in that community, you've earned your stripes of being well-respected by both business and the environment, yet at the same time, there we have over $100 million of investment, we want the energy, we need the energy, it's one of the cleanest outputs of energy you can find on earth, and yet at the same time, we have an environmental group saying, "Stop, don't use them."
Yes, and we're, we're going to be having those kinds of arguments, I think, in, in an even sharper way when it comes to transmission issues. With respect to the, to the Pine Tree project, we, we engaged with the environmental group, but the Pine Tree project has to, has to proceed. And, and when it comes to this, to this debate, the intra-environmental debates that we're going to have, as I say, especially with respect to transmission, I think the greater good has to prevail. And, and especially where Pine Tree is concerned, even apart from the, the investment, the greater good has to be 120 megawatts of clean energy to be brought down to this metropolis that has to be provided with power. Having said that, though, to the extent that we can minimize environmental impacts, to the extent that we can, we can look at bird flight patterns and make sure that we, that we do the least possible harm, to the extent that we can mitigate what it is that we're doing, we of course have to do that too.
Well, people actually put themselves in a tree, just to save one tree. You're talking about flight patterns and things like that, one of the things that I think pressures are going to come to bear on you, and I'm not saying you're going to succumb to it, but fact of the matter is, pressure's going to come to bear on you that might not come to bear on someone who doesn't have your environmental credentials running the biggest water and power department in the country, municipal, because people are going to be so disgusted with the fact, "How could David do that? He knows better, he's not ignorant like all the rest of them that have run the department," right? How are you going to deal with that? The blogs, the emails, the protests, the, you know, hopefully it doesn't get to physical, but it has happened in this city with department heads, how are you going to deal with that?
Well, as far as the blogs are concerned, I've, I've already learned not to pay too much attention, but, but I, but I see the, the problem that you pose, I see it in a different light.
You have a higher standard in certain communities.
Yes, but, but I, but what I would, but the way I see it is that I have relationships with the leaders of the environmental community, and therefore I am able to speak with them, I'm able to, to dialogue with them, I'm able to hopefully convince them. You know, we're going through exactly this situation that you described with respect to the Green Path Transmission Corridor. Right now, right this minute, you know, I'm, I'm firmly convinced that we must access geothermal resources in the Salt and Sea area, and in order to do that, we must build a transmission corridor. Now, I'm, I'm willing to do that with the least possible environmental impact, I'm willing to do that by offering mitigation to the extent that, that is at all feasible, I'm willing to do that by engaging with all of the communities in order to, to do that, I'm willing to look at all of the various alternatives that might be available that made those commitments already to the local environmental groups. But at the end of the day, it's got to be the greater good that prevails. And let me also say this, I'm proud that in that conversation, I'm able to bring with me environmental leaders, and the national and statewide environmental leaders. So, so I think, I think my environmental credentials, my, my connections, just as my relationships with Sacramento lawmakers through all of my years of having served on the regional board, all of that, I think, will be to the benefit of the department. And, and as far as pressure is concerned, I'm going to do what I believe is right.
Okay, good, good, I, I know you will, I've seen you in action before. Another case in point, an example of the Department of Water and Power, when I chaired the committee that oversees it, a company came in and they explained to me how they could turn trash, LA citizens' trash, into energy, and they would like to do it right here in the city of Los Angeles. Take the trash that we produce in the city, take it to a place in the city, and then actually turn it into energy, and I supported it, I voted for it, I applauded them, I, I saw the smiles on their faces, they were so eager, but before they left the door, when they were explaining all this to me, I said, "Well, it's probably going to be a closed day, a cold day in you-know-where before a community in the city of Los Angeles allows you to site that waste-to-energy plant in any community in this city." And guess what? They got stopped. They were ready to spend tens of millions of dollars of their own money, they were ready to do the right thing in the right way, but then the politics of communities in the city didn't allow them to find a place where they could be welcome or allowed to do it. How are you going to deal with that? What responsibility does the department have? Because remember, the department signed the contract, now it wasn't up to the department to site the place and build the facility. We were just there, ready to hook up our lines and collect the electricity when they made it, but they were left to their own devices, and they couldn't handle the politics or whatever it took, and they pretty much have thrown up their hands, from what I understand.
I, I, I'm not familiar with that particular issue. Generally, I'm, I'm a supporter of trash-to-energy technology. I think, I think many local communities have concerns that, that there are emissions from the, from the equipment and the, and the machinery that does that, which is going to foul their air, and therefore what environmental, what environmental advantage have we, have we reached? But, but there are technologies today pioneered in Europe which don't have those kinds of, those kinds of disadvantages. But, but I believe that we can pursue trash-to-energy technology without necessarily citing it right in the middle of a residential community, you know, where, where people look at it. There, there are other things that we can do, trash-to-energy technology can be, can be, can be cited where the trash can be taken to it, or, you know, we have landfills that are filling every day with thousands of tons of, of, of trash, but, but you know, just as with the water recycling issue, it's given rise to a great deal of fear and trepidation on the, on the part of people. Trash-to-energy, I think we need to renew that conversation, but we need to do it in a way that's reassuring to folks so that they won't be so concerned about it. But as a concept, it's, it's something that's done in Europe all of the time.
It's not a concept, it should be a reality in our backyard.
It should be a reality, I, I don't disagree with that at all.
Well, on my last few seconds here, I just want to thank you for putting yourself forward. I, I don't mean this in a, in a bad way, but I'm sure you've tackled many, many, many challenges by your resume. I don't think you understand how consuming the toughest jo-- I say, this is the toughest job in town, is the job that you want. Thank God you want it, because you have to want it if you're going to do a great job. I believe that you will, yet at the same time, my parting shot is this, make sure that the department is a better, honest, marketing organization than they have been in the past. Because on the last example I gave you, if the department would have engaged with that third-party contractor, I think that we could have made it happen, and if we would have made the first one happen and proved to the community that it doesn't smell, it's not too noisy, it's not creating environmental problems for your community, we would have many, many more contracts being signed and moving forward. But instead, we're down to zero, we haven't got off the ground, it's incumbent upon you and the department to make sure that we make those things happen. And I support you on that, and I, I wish you the best, and good luck.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, followed by our final speaker, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to thank you for taking the time in the office to give me some additional background that you had, which is not part of your resume, and I'm also very pleased to hear you talk about your sense of balance between the environmental issues, the cost, and what's practical. The one area I'd just like to comment on, it is a big jump to all of a sudden move from the commission to the day-to-day operations of a general manager and the responsibility for several thousand employees with all of the issues that deal with unions and lawsuits and all the other things on a practical basis. Have you kind of reconciled those issues? Because, you know, we may have great policies, great philosophies, but if operationally that department doesn't adhere to them, or they do not support them, and you can't get those several thousand people working in unison, those great policies kind of go by the wayside. Just give us some idea of how you've kind of reconciled, how you're going to deal with those management issues.
Yes, Councilmember, if, if I'd been the kind of commissioner that would just turn up for a meeting once every two weeks, I think that would have been true, it would have been a big jump. But I was never that kind of commissioner, I was there often, I was there meeting with the managers, planning strategy, dealing with legal, employment, labor issues, very, very extensively, I dare say, more than probably any other commissioner ever did. I, I called, for instance, all of the key, key management leaders to a meeting, my very first day, I wanted to meet with all of them. I know all of them, I know them, I know their strengths, I know their weaknesses, I know their programs, I know their personnel, I know what I want them to do, and I've already, and I've already set in motion a number of things that I'm going to be doing, for instance, employee meetings. The, the department hasn't had employee meetings between the GM and the employees for years. I'm going to do that, I'm actually going to go out to the employees, talk with them, meet with them, let them know what my direction is, what my vision is, I'm going to meet one-on-one with every single manager, I'm going to set goals for them, have them respond to me, we're going to do it a little bit like the private sector, so that we'll, so that we'll all know exactly what, you know, what tune we're all marching to and what direction we're all, we're all going in. And I think early indications are, from just having had two days in this new position, I feel very comfortable in it, and I believe that the workforce at DWP is really hungry for exactly this kind of leadership, somebody who's going to step up and say, "This is where we're going," and having, asking everybody to follow.
And I appreciate it, and I think they, that generally, workforces are looking for that, but I think where things begin to get a little mushy is when you have to say no, when you are rewarding some and others do not get that reward, people get promoted, other, now all of a sudden, you're the visible symbol of those decisions, before it was somebody else, and you were a, basically a, a person that people felt great that the commissioner took that much time, but it's a totally different relationship when you have the power on people's careers, when you have the ability to say yes to this person, no to another person, and all those great meetings kind of go by the wayside, because as we all know, employees get very personal as it relates to their future and what they think they have coming. And so, that's where the friction occurs, and also the fact that you have a department that people stay for decades, so there are times in which, over time, people were out there welcoming with each other, and so you deal with those grievances and how people are relating to each other, and that's the, the thing that wears general managers to a frazzle sometimes. Have you given those kinds of issues any thought?
Yes, I, I don't think that I'm entering a popularity contest here. I think that I have to be guided by, by the best interest of the city and the best interest of the department, and, and if that entails making some people angry at me, then so be it.
Well, thank you, congratulations.
So, just as I'm, I'm sure, you know, in your, in your career, there've been many times when you've had to wrestle with those kinds of decisions as well.
And again, it changes that dynamic of coming in with that philosophical view, people are very pleased, but the dynamic changes when you get to that point of saying the little word "no" sometimes.
Yes, I'm, I'm sure it will, I'm sure it will arrive.
But congratulations, and thank you for accepting this appointment.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your kindness in meeting with me personally.
Mr. Labange, followed by Ms. Han.
Thank you for letting me speak in a second time, I just wanted to say, on water, all water is recycled, right?
All water is recycled.
All water is recycled, and I think it's so important, and I know in the early 90s, then Governor Wilson and then Mayor Riordan stood out in the San Fernando Valley to praise what would be a water reclamation line from the Sepulveda Basin, only when it was finally completed, both made, I believe, were out of office or nearing their completion of their term, and there was the uproar from the, the public on that. We must inform the public about all water is recycled, I think in the Mississippi, you know, if, depending on where you are in the Mississippi, it may be multiple times, it's the same water that goes through in the area, and it's so, I guess, so education is so important, history is so important. I did want to say, unless we get in a critical, critical stage, I do fight for water fountains in the city. I believe they're important, to look at the DWP building in the Civic Center and have water in it, I don't think you symbolically take it out unless it's necessary. I do believe in the fountains around the city, whether it's in Exposition Park, which was built as a, by the efforts of DWP to the Aqueduct, or whether it's the Mulholland Fountain where Mulholland once lived at Las Feliz in Riverside, so I just want to let you know, that's a big value of mine, because unless it's in, unless we're at a different stage than what we are now, I would say, I like fountains, I think they're important, they're important for people.
But we, we don't need to remove the fountains, they just need to use recycled water.
Right.
As, as the DWP fountains do.
More purple pipe throughout the city, which is so important. And Mr. Rosendahl hit on a very good point about street lighting. Sometimes the lights are on because they're doing a burn test, I know there's some confusion. If you go by your building on Beverly, it used to be the Bureau of Power and Light, you know, in 1927, I think there was a consolidation with water. There should be a thought, and I hope you could look at this, of a discussion of bringing street lighting into water and power. Much of the city has a system that is joint, and I know I had lights out, and Greg Mathis does a great job, who's one of your top leaders over there, anytime we have a problem, but there's some old systems, and, and the public doesn't know, they just see the light on or off, and they want it done, so I just wanted to lay that on you as well. And it is a great honor for all of us to serve, it's a great honor to become a general manager, you know, and so, work hard and enjoy your work, which I know you will, because what I know of you, you do enjoy that aspect of it, but balance it out and delegate it, because you, as, as Mr. Parks said, it is a different role from commission president, and you were the most active commissioner, you did visit people in the hospital, you did go places, and not with publicity and action in mind, just to be the right person that you are, but at the same time, don't let it burden you, because you have a family as well, and balance it out, but delegate it, and then have checkpoints that you're going to approve, improve the quality of the, one of the greatest departments, I think, in government is our Department of Water and Power. Without water power, we're not here, folks, without Mulholland and the people who built the system, we're not here. Thank you very much, good luck, Mr. Nahai.
Very true, thank you so much.
Ms. Han.
One last challenge, we know that ships contribute like 20% of the air pollution to the LA basin, we know the best way to reduce the emissions that the ships emit is to have them, the ship to shore, alternative maritime power, electricity. The harbor department has embarked on a plan to amp all their terminals, you know, I think by 2011, 2012. Love for you to really encourage the harbor department, encourage the general manager, Geraldine Nats, assign maybe a staff person to really make that a win-win for all of us. We get more users of our electricity, we cut pollution, we improve the lives of those who live around the port, Wilmington and San Pedro, but also, we know, it, it really impacts the entire region. Love for you, among all your other things that you're doing, really get involved in that project, and whatever... that project, and whatever your department can do to ensure that we speed up that timetable, will save lives, I promise you.
Oh, and, and as you know, we've actually gone, I think, a step further than that already. We, we formed the committee of Harbor Commissioners and DWP Commissioners. It's called the Ad hoc Committee for Amping the Port.
Good. Well, it's too ad hoc for me, because it's not moving fast enough, and, and they're missing deadlines already.
Well, here's the, the, the issue with it has been, I think, DWP, DWP's part was to come up with a rate that would actually be attractive to, to the shippers and so on. That rate, I believe, has been agreed upon between the two, between the two departments. And as you may know, I have a very close, good-working relationship with, with the commissioners and with, and with Geraldine, and, and I'm always very happy to work with them. I think part of the snag has been that the shippers need a little bit more persuading.
True. True. Thank you. Thank you for that commitment. Let's, let's make that happen sooner than later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Our last speaker on this item, um, thank you. You survived, I think, two hours of our discussion today, Mr. Nahai, so you're off and running. I did remember my question, it was about employees, but someone else asked it, so we're okay about that. Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, I believe you said there was a motion required?
Yes, Madam President, this was submitted from committee without recommendation, so a motion is required to approve the nomination.
Ms. Perry, do you want to move?
Move it, yes.
Yes, Ms. Perry will move it, and Mr. Rosendahl will second. That is before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Nahai. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I believe item 24 and 25 was called special based on amending motions, and those have been distributed. Is that correct?
Yes, they have been.
Colleagues, if we could, unless there are questions, on item 24 and 25, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. That item's been approved. Next item.
Next item's item number eight, and that was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I just wanted to bring this to our attention. We don't have port staff here today, unfortunately, to answer any of your questions, but this item is an amendment to our port tariff, which would, in essence, create off-limits areas within the Port of Los Angeles for recreational vehicles. You know, since 9/11, we have so many issues in this country, but the Port of Los Angeles is a wide-open area, still, in my opinion, a very vulnerable entryway into this country. And we've had recreational vehicle boats being allowed to really, you know, navigate all through the Port of Los Angeles in every area. John Holmes, who formerly was the captain of the port with Coast Guard, now works as the operations officer for our Harbor Department, has decided that's one area we should clamp down on a little bit. So, we are now going to be having controlled navigational areas within the port, and small craft and recreational boats need to get permits if they want to go in certain areas of the port. And it's just a way that we can keep our eye a little bit better on who's in the port, where are they going, what their business is. And I think this is a good move for us as we move forward to trying to really secure the Port of Los Angeles. So, we're still, I use this opportunity to say, we're still way underfunded in terms of port security. I was very concerned about something I read recently, where the administration in our federal government is looking to even diminish funds that would come to port security in this country, which I think is a big mistake. But this is one, one way that our Harbor Department and our port authorities are taking a look at who's going where in the port, and I think this is a good item. So, I just wanted to bring that attention. There will be good outreach with all the boaters in the harbor area. They're, they're talking to the yacht clubs, they're, they're making sure that people know they're not exactly going to arrest anybody or take them off to jail if they're in the wrong spot. But this is just a way to have a tighter rein on who's at the Port of Los Angeles. So, I wanted to bring that to our attention.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Appreciate that. And Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
That item has been approved. Next item.
Item 11, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, and then followed by Mr. Labange.
What's this one? Do I call this one?
Yes, Mr. Labange.
This is Hahn, and we want to continue it a week to the 12th.
Thank you. Then, no objection, we will continue that a week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item's item number 13, and Mr. Garcetti had asked that that be held on the desk.
Item 13, did you say?
I'm sorry, item number 12.
12, okay. That'll be held on the desk. Will he be returning for that, or just holding on the desk for now?
Um, that, actually, that was by Mr. Garcetti, and he's, he has been, was excused to leave early, so I don't know if that's ready to be voted on.
We'll, we'll check with his staff and be able to, so we will hold that on the desk. Next item.
Next item's item number 19, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Yes, Mr. Parks.
Yes, I would just like to add one instruction on this item to the CLA, and ask that they go meet with the appropriate LAPD personnel of the commission, so that they can reconcile the issues of gifts that appear, that there's a lack of understanding on some of these administrative code sections, because this is the, I think we had six or seven of these in committee a while back, our council a while back sent them back to committee, but we're still getting them after the money's expended with no real view of whether it followed the city's rules. So, we just ask that instruction be added to the approval of this report.
Mr. Zine.
So, if I understand from Councilmember Parks, we're going to approve this with a follow-up. We don't need to review it now?
Several months ago, but it, we keep getting them in the same fashion, so I thought it'd be helpful if the CLA went and explained the administrative code and hoped that the commissions begin to comply with it. There's nothing we can do with this, because it's already done.
The future expenditures.
That's right.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for future expenditures, thank you, Madam Clerk. Please open the roll on that item with the amendment, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. It's been indicated Mr. Garcetti's office is fine to go with item number 12. Did you want to speak on that, Ms. Hahn, before we do that?
Uh, colleagues, what's before us today is the Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act, TOPA, which I think is actually a very exciting concept, and it seems like to be, it could be a next step that we take here in the city of Los Angeles. And we're asking the CLA to look into the DC model for TOPA and see whether or not that's something we could do here in Los Angeles. This concept is simple. When an apartment owner decides that he or she wants to sell their building, they notify the tenants. If the tenants are interested in purchasing the building, they join together and partner with a consultant to raise the necessary financing to purchase the building. This goes way beyond our current laws, which allows individual tenants to buy their unit if their building is converted to condos. And it's a way to really increase people's participation in ownership, not only of their own unit, but of their own building. It's working in DC, and we would like for us to take a look if this is the next step for Los Angeles. One of the changes that we're suggesting is that the city would put out an RFP for companies that want to assist the tenants in the financing, just to make sure they're ethical, they're on the up and up, and everything is transparent. So, we also want to make sure we work with the, the Apartment Association to make sure that their needs and concerns of the apartment owners are properly addressed in this. But I think it's a good idea. We have a lot of opportunities in the city of Los Angeles. This could be one more cutting-edge opportunity that we give people to take control of their own future.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. I just rise because I want to compliment Ms. Hahn on two things. I want to say on Channel 35 that that is a very snazzy jacket that you're wearing. Okay? And if I could describe it, it's kind of a crumbly, it's a Christmas red with this crumbly, it is stylish. It is very, very stylish. Take the camera off me, put it on her, and get a real tight shot. It's a good jacket. But seriously, though, I think that we have a responsibility to try to come up with creative opportunities for individuals to acquire property. And for me, this, this makes sense, that we look at ways in which we can make this happen, because you want to try to have all Americans have an opportunity to realize the American dream of homeownership. So, we will monitor this situation, and we're excited for it to come back, so that we could have a, a intelligent debate. And I would hope that at the end of the day, that we would be successful. And if we are successful, Councilmember Hahn, I would expect 14 other snazzy red jackets. I'm a 42 short, and like some bigger black buttons on mine.
Can't wait to see that. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item number 22, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
We get to see the red jacket again. Ms. Hahn.
Uh, colleagues, I also wanted to bring this attention to everyone, particularly those who are watching Channel 35 in the harbor area. This is an amendment that the Port of Los Angeles brought to our committee with the firm EDOF to provide architectural landscaping services for our long-awaited San Pedro waterfront. It's about additional $1 million to this firm. And again, I was hoping the, the port staff would be here today, because I, I wanted you to be able to join with me and hold them accountable for what I have perceived as an unbelievable lack of enthusiasm, a lack of purpose, lack of commitment to building the long-awaited promenade waterfront in, in San Pedro. This is something that we have been working towards. When the Urban Land Institute came to San Pedro in 2002, they said, "Two things you need to do: build housing in downtown San Pedro and build a waterfront. Both of those things will absolutely revitalize your town." We've begun to be building housing in downtown San Pedro, but the Port of Los Angeles has reneged on their promise to build this waterfront. It's absolutely, nothing has happened since 2005, and it's a shame. And it's not just for San Pedro, colleagues. I mean, it is for San Pedro, but Los Angeles has a waterfront. And we should be a tourist destination like San Diego, like Long Beach, like Oakland, like San Francisco, Baltimore, Hong Kong, Singapore. You go down the name of great cities that have great waterfronts, and it is a benefit to everybody. I mean, these are tourist dollars. And we know, when tourists spend dollars in Los Angeles, it comes to our general fund, which is dollars that we can spend on things like police and fire and, and, and street maintenance. So, I pretty much drug them over the coals when they were in committee. And I just wanted you all to know that we need to keep them accountable for building this waterfront. It's important to all of us, it's important to the city, and I've been very, very disappointed in their lack of enthusiasm to build this long-awaited waterfront. So, I need you to stand with me, I, I need you to support this like we do anything else in the city. The LA River, Griffith Park, the Observatory, every important thing in this city deserves our passion and enthusiasm. This is something the Port of Los Angeles should be building. They're making some mistakes, they've lost the momentum, and I think we're suffering as a result of that. So, stand with me on this. Again, it's important, not just for San Pedro, it's important for this whole city to have a world-class waterfront. We have one shot to do it, we should do it right.
All right, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, just a quick shout-out to you. I was in the committee when you really read them the Riot Act, and one of our jobs as elected officials is to see that the bureaucracy moves forward with our projects in a timely manner. And if we don't look sometimes, it falls by the boards. And I know you have the most vigilant set of eyes on that project, and the harbor, frankly, is very lucky to have you living there and caring about Wilmington and San Pedro the way you do, because you certainly do. And as a member of that committee, and I know Ms. Labange is on the committee as well, the three of us, the two of us are standing tall with you, Ms. Hahn, on this one, and we won't let go of it until you're happy with what they're doing. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
I support it, we all should support it. It's good for all of Los Angeles to get the waterfront built. And I want the Harbor Commission to hear this, and the director of the harbor, celebrate its 100th anniversary this week, which is so important. And everyone in the mayor's office and all of the council office, this is an important project, and I vote.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. No further speakers in the queue, so, Madam Clerk, if you would, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item.
Item number 23, called special by Councilmember Gruhl.
Ms. Gruhl.
Thank, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I, I will be brief, because the day has been long, and we had a great conversation yesterday, and I do want to compliment Ms. Hahn too on the waterfront. I remember going there when I was young, and that, although it won't be, it wasn't as grand as it's going to be, at least there was some attention there. Now, I think you have really changed that location down there, so congratulations on that. Colleagues, before us today is the committee report on the preparation of our strategic plan. And I believe very strongly that to, in order to create the kind of transportation system we have, that we want to have, that we need to have a strategic plan where we control our own destiny, and that we must look at long-term and short-term investments. And it's really, I think, a critical step towards prioritizing, being able to go to the federal and state government and say, "Here's what we plan to do in the city of Los Angeles, here's how we're working with the MTA and SCAG and other areas," and be able to say, "We, we have an idea where we're going." And we've been working cooperatively with the mayor, who similarly has supported the concept of needing a strategic plan, but also not waiting to do the things we need to do short-term. And as we stand to do left-hand turn signals and synchronization and a number of other things, we're going to continue to do that. And I know that we have transportation individuals here today who are also excited that we are going to do this, because when I asked the department, "When was the last time we did our own strategic plan?", there was a lot of blank stares and trying to remember when that was going to occur. We do work with the SCAG, Greg Smith was reminding me today, with the RTP, and that they do the regional transportation plan. We do work with the Planning Department, but this plan is going to be comprehensive and involve those entities. But most importantly, we are going to involve the public. And so, that is the most critical part, Mr. Rosendahl, as you know, which we're going to look at funding and legislative constraints, population, job concentrations, and projections for the future. And so, we think, and thank the SCAG for giving us $250,000 to help us on our way. I sat down not only with Transportation Department, but with Gail Goldberg from the Planning Department, who is thrilled about us all doing this at the same time together, because they are reviewing their general plan for their transportation element that is part of that, they're going to call it their mobility element, because we think moving people is the most important. So, I know we spent a long time yesterday, when Rita was here, talking about transportation, but I did want to highlight that this is not only the city council's plan and the mayor, but the plan for the residents of Los Angeles, and to hear them, and they can connect through our, our website, to be able to get their voices heard, because nothing is more important today than, than traffic and the other issues that we face on a daily basis. So, with that, Mr. President.
Shall we vote, then?
Yes, we can vote. Thank you very much.
Oh, we have a speaker, I'm sorry, Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl.
And then, we'll vote. Now, we're all in a hurry, but I just have to reemphasize what you've just done here. It's pretty embarrassing and outrageous that the city has not had a plan in place for the last bunch of years, and every time a constituent in gridlock comes to me, they say, "Well, what are you doing about it? How are you making it better?" Well, thank you, Ms. Gruhl, for putting this before us. I've also put a motion before us that I expect us to vote on shortly, calling for a regional summit. I mean, look, San Diego to Santa Barbara and everywhere in between, there are 20 million of us that have had it in gridlock. It's about time the governor showed real leadership. It's about time the Governor showed real leadership on the issue, not grab a billion and a half away from a transportation plan to balance his budget, which was outrageous. But we should get more funds, more commitment, and more cities and counties involved with a regional plan. So, we all can wake up someday and say, "We got a 20-year plan, year 1 through 5, we're doing this, 5 to 10, we're doing that," and so on. Give people hope that we, as leaders, are finding the ways to fund it and creating the strategies that do get us out of our gridlock and make things better. So, thank you for this step on doing it, and I look forward to working with you on it in the future. Thank you, Mr. President. You're welcome. Mr. Labonde?
And thank you, but I will say thank you, because all of us have a role, whatever committee chair that we are. And if you get in a huddle when you play football, only the quarterback calls the play. But we're not in a huddle playing football, we're at the city council so we each could stand and make our pronouncements. Wendy, your leadership is very helpful. Just in the previous item, Ms. Hahn, who has been such a fighter for the port and the area and revitalizing the port, district-wide, city-wide on transportation, your efforts here, and I join in pushing it along, because we have to have a plan to give us some guide point. And we also take into considerations the other cities around, the 88 cities in the county, and Southern California, the other counties, as we go forward. So, thank you, push ahead.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. We all support this, Tom. There we go. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President's, item number 30, and that was called Special Counselmember Perry, and there are two amending motions that have been distributed.
Counselmember Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. As many of you know, I am the City of Los Angeles' elected representative to the South Coast Air Quality Management District, and we have wrestled over the last year with proposed rules that would allow the Board to grant permits for siting of power plants throughout our catchment area. Some of you may have read or heard that the City of Vernon filed an application for a permit with the South Coast Air Quality District and the California Energy Commission in June of 2006. So, at this point, the application for a power plant is pending, and AQMD has not yet made a determination whether their application is in compliance with the South Coast Air Quality Rules and Regulations, the earliest determination that may occur next spring. And of course, the project will come back to the South Coast Air Quality Management District Board. And for purposes of any questions, I do have Mr. Mosen Nazimi, who is the Assistant Deputy Executive Officer, here from the South Coast Air Quality Management District, if any of you should have any questions. But today, colleagues, we are considering a resolution that I introduced back in April of 2007, asking the city to take an official position on the proposed City of Vernon power plant, which will urge all associated governing and regulatory bodies to forestall approval of the plant until all issues regarding power need, pollution, and environmental justice, as well as any mitigation requirements, if necessary, compensation to communities, are fully considered, addressed, and understood. And I also ask you to join me, the City Attorney, and Councilman Huizar is going to speak in a second, so he can, he'll be well-served to speak for himself, but he has already put on record as well, to oppose the development of the 914 proposed megawatt natural gas-fired power plant in the City of Vernon. So, my resolution, or with the amendment, asks you to support authorization to the City Attorney to protect our city's interests by intervening in the licensing procedures pending before the California Energy Commission. And for the record, as a member of the Board of the AQMD, I have voted against the rules that would allow the siting of the plant. I believe that any new plant without retiring the old plant that is already online puts the community at risk, and some may argue that natural gas, while cleaner than coal burning, is a step up. I would disagree, given the location still having serious health effects, no plans to retire the plant that is currently in operation. And in fact, initial estimates show that the proposed plant would generate 10 times more energy than the City of Vernon would use or could use, supporting the assertion that Vernon's energy needs could be met with a much smaller project. We cannot allow communities like East Los Angeles, South Los Angeles, to bear the brunt of potential threats to the health and environment. The new power plant must be subject to extreme review and mitigation, so the communities in which power plants are built receive what they demand or are entitled to, and that the potential harm of a new power plant is fully understood before a vote is taken. And in the spirit of meeting also Mr. Huizar's goals as well, we can't take that up today because of the Brown Act we've been advised, and the resolution I introduced last April, I am also offering an amendment to my resolution. And if passed the resolution, my motion will amend to put the city on record against the potential plant, authorize the City Attorney to intervene in the licensing procedures before the California Energy Commission, and we'll have further conversation regarding Mr. Huizar's motion in committee as well. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. Huizar?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I introduced a motion about a week ago that is related to this issue, pretty much opposing the, asking the City of Los Angeles to be on record to oppose the construction of the Vernon power plant. And what was different from any previous motions was that that one asked to have the City Attorney intervene in the regulatory process that's currently occurring right now in the state of California. I live near where this power plant will be built. I grew up in Bull Heights, I still am very proud to say that I still live in Bull Heights. And about for the last few months, we have been meeting every Monday at Resurrection Church to talk about how we could get the City of Vernon to explain in a better way to the community about what they're doing. In fact, two weeks ago, we had about 500 people march to where they want to construct the Vernon power plant, and to be present at a hearing that the City of Vernon will have. However, they canceled the meeting. That goes to show us that they are not in good faith moving forward. And as Ms. Perry mentioned, they also are, in my view, forcing this through with very little public participation, or probably trying to get as much as they can by the construction of this power plant. It was mentioned that this would give them 10 times more than the power they need to run the City of Vernon. This does tell us that they possibly want to sell the credits and profit at the expense of the health of the residents of the City of Los Angeles. I, as a resident of Bull Heights and as a councilmember, would certainly not stand by and allow this to happen. We have to be strong in our voices, we have to be very clear that the City of Los Angeles would not stand by while children and seniors are affected if this Vernon power plant should be built. Let me tell you this, the AQMD has estimated that between four to 12 deaths annually will occur in the area due to the increase in plant emissions. Who are these people? Seniors with health problems, young people with asthma? This is unacceptable, and I hope we could move forward very clearly to say that the City of Los Angeles is opposed to this, that we would not allow some to profit at the expense of the health of our young people and our seniors. But what is also interesting in this is that they have not even explored possible green energy. They have not explored other alternatives to building this power plant. It is amazing, it is appalling, and I urge all of you to give your eye vote to this, to stand up for the residents of the City of Los Angeles, to stand up for the young people and the seniors who will be affected should this power plant be built. I've submitted also an amending motion to Ms. Perry's resolution that incorporates my motion that I presented last week with the language in that motion, and I think it could go forward with the City Attorney's consent that there is no conflicting language in that, I believe. So, as we speak, as we move forward, hopefully the City Attorney has looked at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Alakon, followed by Ms. Perry.
Members, I want to stand in support of this motion, and I applaud Councilmember Huizar for taking a leadership role in this endeavor. When we were in the California Legislature, Mr. Weston, we had the crisis, energy crisis that we had to manage. One of the things that we did was to ensure that when new power plants were built, that they would be built in accordance with environmental justice considerations. And so, I would like to extend to Mr. Huizar to work with my staff to ensure that the City Attorney has the information about the law as it relates to the building out of this particular plant, and whether or not they have met the standards. I assume they met the standards, the question is, to what extent did they meet the standards, or if in fact, the study that they conducted relative to environmental justice specifically is sufficient, or whether we would challenge even the study. And so, I would like to work with you to ensure that the City Attorney has every opportunity to have the information that is relative to the provision in the law that we did. It was actually to assist the San Diego area during the time, if you remember, Mr. Weston, I'm sure you do. And one of the provisions that was inserted at my request as the Chair of the Environmental Justice Committee for the State Senate, and frankly, to help me make a positive decision on allowing for power plants to be built, was to insert a provision to protect communities that would be considered subject to environmental justice concerns. And so, congratulations, and let us know how we can help.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you. Again, Mr. Chair, I ran out of time before. I'll continue to keep this matter going through committee, and I would urge all of you who have an interest in this to please try and work with me through the committee, since I'm the board member for the AQMD, and we can avail ourselves of the resources that AQMD has to offer. One thing that I find so shocking about this situation is the willingness of so many of the surrounding cities to accept money without retiring the plant that exists now, and then bringing on such an enormous, an abundance, an overabundance of megawatts for an area that clearly has not yet demonstrated a need for it, even if you want to argue that you're building for the future, that's still light years ahead of where Vernon is, and for that matter, even the surrounding area. And there is some discussion, and I'll be bringing this into committee and ask for clarification on that, as to whether or not the City of Vernon has already sold the plant that is currently in operation. So, Mr. Nazimi, if you can help us with that and clarify that information if at all possible, so that we can understand exactly where we are. I think as a city, we're probably all on the same page here, and I think we're probably all working in the same direction. And I think it would be to our benefit, if we all believe that this is a serious problem, to be able to at least share the information objectively and on the record, so that we can make sure that we're protecting the interests of our mutual constituency, as this is just across the street from my district too. So, thank you very much, and hopefully we'll have a unanimous vote.
Mr. Huizar, back again.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Perry, for your leadership on AQMD. I do have a question. Since I have incorporated my motion in your resolution into these actions, hopefully it passes, would it still be alive in your committee? Should we still discuss it there, since we've already approved the item?
I think we should ask the City Attorney, because I was told by the CLA's office that there was a Brown Act concern, which is why I couldn't incorporate your motion, but maybe we can get an official determination on the record. Fine with me either way, whatever's legal is fine with me.
Mr. City Attorney, do you want to respond to that, please?
If the item, if you're amending it, the council or the committee could receive and file the one that it doesn't use in committee.
Okay. So, the appropriate action would be for the committee to receive and file that motion, since the council has already acted on identical language.
That's true.
Okay.
Okay, the matter is now before us, objection, the resolution, and two amendments. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Very good, thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Perry. The next item, please.
Next item's item 34, and that was called special for "Card from the Public."
Card from the public. Mr. Arnold Sachs.
On number 34.
Good afternoon, good evening, whichever. Second Street Bridge, I was in front of the City Council yesterday regarding the Second Street Bridge and the influence or the delay in construction that concerns east side rail line extension. After the banners hung, and after the banner comes down, how long before the construction will begin for the east side extension? And how long will it take to complete the construction? How much will the construction cost for this bridge widening that's required for the east side extension? And is that funding part of the total cost for the east side extension? I think these questions are relevant, and it would be nice if somebody from the City Council stepped up and answered them, or got answers for them. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the items on the agenda. Now, we're going to go into closed session.
Open the roll.
Oh, open, excuse me, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Thank you.
Twelve ayes.
And, Mr. President, there is a card on one of the closed session items, item 40. Do you wish to take that public comment before going into closed session?
Yes, number 40, Mr. Sachs again, number 40.
Thank you again. Closed session items. On these items, I'd like to know that the cost for the legal service is included if it's an outside representation, and I'd like to know if it is an outside, what the city's paying for it. I think we're entitled to know that. I think it should also be included as a means of checks and balances for the city's attorney's office. And I do have a legal question, I don't know if it's proper for me to ask it at this time, but when a item is called special due to amended motion, since it's an amended motion, the item that is normally heard in committee would be different than what is presented by the amended motion. That being said, should public comment be allowed on amended motions in the chambers of the City Council? Because it's a different item than what is heard in the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. We're now going to go into closed session, and Sergeant Arms, please clear the chambers. We will return shortly. Okay, we're back in open session once again, and we had four items in closed session. Madam Clerk?
First item before council is item number 42, and that's in the case of Jamie Foster, deceased versus City of L.A. That's a workers' comp case, and the total settlement is $21,334.21.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Labange, you got a question?
What was the total I had again?
It was, the total net is $21,334.21, and that was less the amount of $104,208, and then the release amount is $125,542.21.
Which is correct. Thank you. There was already money paid out on that, Mr. Labange. Okay. Next matter, please.
Rest her soul, she was a brave firefighter.
Yes.
Next item is item 43, and that settlement in the case of Kim Fisher versus the City of L.A. Authorizing the city attorney to settle $200,000. $35,000 will in back pay from the LA FD payroll account, and also the plaintiff will resign.
Okay. On that matter, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Next matter, please.
Next item, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Parks requests to be excused December 11th, 18th, and 19th. Those are for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Labange and Ms. Gruhl.
And that clears the desk.
All right, thank you. Announcements? See no announcements, adjourned motions. Please stand, adjourned motions. Adjourned motion is missed on.
Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn today in memory of Maria Galetti, who passed away peacefully at home on November 27th. She was born in St. Louis and lived most of her life in Sicily. She met her husband of 55-years, Salvatore, there, and together they had four children. She was a devoted wife, mother, and grandmother, who dedicated her life to her family. She survived by her sons Al, Sebastiano, and Joe, her daughter Angela. She survived by her sons Al, Sebastiano, and Joe, her daughter Angela, fourteen grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Maxine McGinnis passed away last week. Maxine was the mother of city attorney Michelle McGinnis, who has been working very closely in Watts with my Watts Gang Task Force. She's been working at Markham Middle School in Watts, and really changing a lot of things there. So, we really wanted to adjourn today in the memory of her mother, who was born in Texas and relocated to Los Angeles in nineteen forty-six to attend UCLA. She went on to be a social worker for the Department of Public Social Services, where she worked for many years. In nineteen sixty-eight, she opened the Jacqueline Home for Girls, named after Jacqueline Kennedy. Over the years, the home received a number of awards for its work with neglected and delinquent girls. It was one of the first minority-owned girls' homes, and eventually grew to three separate homes, which became childcare centers. Maxine is survived by her daughter Michelle. And one more I'd like us to adjourn in memory of is Valentin Ivankovic, who passed away on November twenty-ninth at the age of eighty-two. Val was born in Sarajevo to Croatian parents, and to escape communism, he fled his homeland to Rome, Italy. There, he was appointed as Secretary General in charge of assisting refugees from Eastern Europe with resettlement in nineteen forty-seven. He came to the United States, eventually landing in Los Angeles. He worked at Bullock's Department Stores, and then the National Discounter, S.H. Kress. This began a near forty-year career in retail, eventually leading to the position of President of H.S. Kress West and Director of its parent company, Ginesco Incorporated. In nineteen fifty-two, he met and married his wife Ernestine. They were married for fifty-five years, and they had one daughter, Tina Marie. He was very big in the Croatian community and in the church. He was the co-founder of the first Croatian-American cultural club in San Pedro, where he was president for ten years. He participated in peace negotiations in Geneva, Switzerland, that brought an end to the war in Bosnia. He was later president for the formal treaty signing, he was present for the formal treaty signing at the White House with former President Bill Clinton. He survived by his wife Ernestine, his daughter Tina, son-in-law Jeff, step-granddaughter Christina, granddaughter Brittany, and sister Tonka. A funeral mass will be offered at Mary Star of the Sea in San Pedro tomorrow at ten-thirty. What a great life he lived, and he has really made this place a better place. We will miss him tremendously.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to do an adjourning motion on behalf of Police Officer James Carroll from the Seventy-seventh Street area. His family members passed away due to an accident. He lost Ria Carroll and Alexis Herrera, wife and stepdaughter respectively. They passed away Friday, November the twenty-third, in Beaver, Utah. It's a terrible tragedy. Ria is survived by her daughter Michaela, Father Richard, Mother Carolyn, and sisters Carrie and Leanna. Alexis is also survived by her father Salvador. Officer Carroll has been a member of the Los Angeles Police Department since November nineteen ninety-seven. Services were held on Tuesday, December the fourth, two thousand and seven. And in lieu of flowers, the family asked that donations be made to the Los Angeles Police Memorial Foundation. And if all members are willing to sign on, I think it would be a nice gesture.
Yes, all members on that.
Because we're all city employees.
Yes.
Another adjourning motion I wanted to do to mark the passage of not only a historic person, but history and practice that has long since passed, since here in Los Angeles, we have lost many of our corporate headquarters here in Los Angeles, but one corporation remains with a long history of philanthropy, and a man who led it in earlier times, and his name was Robert Anderson. And he passed away at the age of ninety at his home in Roswell, New Mexico. He had a very interesting life. He was a wildcatter, and, most important, a renowned philanthropist who founded the Atlantic Richfield Oil Company, and served as its chief executive officer for seventeen years, chairman of the board for twenty-one years, member of the Board of Directors for twenty-three years, active in the oil industry since his graduation from the University of Chicago in nineteen thirty-nine. And he created Arco through a nineteen sixty-six merger of Atlantic and Richfield Oil Companies, and led Arco's move from New York to Los Angeles in nineteen seventy-two, when it opened the landmark Arco Plaza at Fifth and Flower here in downtown. Just more recently, as a philanthropist, the company donated, and he led that effort, three million dollars towards the cost of a new building for modern art at the Los Angeles County Museum of Art, better known as LACMA. And the building, which opened in eighty-six, was named after him. He was also instrumental in assisting in the rebuild of the Central Library after its tragic fire in the late nineteen eighties. His contributions and accomplishments have been of enormous value to the city of Los Angeles, and I just wanted to mark his passing. He survived by his wife Barbara, seven children, and a host of grandchildren.
Ms. Perry, should that be all members also?
Yeah, that would be great, all members.
All members on that also. Thank you. Any other adjourning motions? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please. Thank you. Our next meeting will be in Van Nuys, the Van Nuys City Hall, this Friday at ten a.m. Van Nuys City Hall. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.